This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for making paper copies. It's so much easier to see.
Sure, we hope that helps. I want you to highlight or take notes or whatever you need to.
This is just exactly what the slide is gonna be, so excellent.
Thank you, thank you for coming this morning. You know, on a Friday morning, it's tough, especially in the weather, with some ice out there, but yeah, thank you. Maybe just a quick housekeeping item. We have scheduled, it was scheduled a tour with Wasatch Integrated next Thursday before council meeting at 4:00 P.M. Are you still interested in doing that, or we can postpone it, we can kick it down the road?
Where's Wasatch Tour?
It's the landfill.
Oh, okay.
Number 193.
Okay.
Is that something we still wanna do?
What do you wanna do?
It's something that they, the director there suggested, and at the time Shane said that's a good idea, and I think it's a good idea, but timing wise, I don't know if it works for.
It's kinda hard on a council day. Should we reschedule it for another day?
I would rather reschedule.
Yeah.
I have a hard time just working.
Okay, we'll reschedule, and then we thought, you know, depending what happens today, you could even use that time for budget stuff.
Yeah.
So we're going to cancel that tour. Will you remind me to call me?
The tour?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, here's the best time of the year, right? As far as schedule, we know we're maybe a few weeks behind schedule, but we think there's still plenty of time to go through the budget and address all your concerns and all your issues. As we go into this budget, we know that just by the nature of governmental budgeting, it's complex. It's not as easy as just a simple budget because there are always so many funds involved. You have a fund for a different purpose, there's restricted revenues, what you can spend money on, there are lots of complex factors. So our hope is to simplify it best we can today. We know there's still a lot of numbers, but we hope to have just kind of an overview discussion today. We've planned a follow-up meeting to dive a little deeper with department heads, if you wanna do that. We'll kind of maybe ask at the end of the meeting if that's our next step, what our next step might be. Our objective always with the budget is to give you the best information we can give you. And, you know, it's the city council's budget, you set policy, and we try to create a budget around the direction you would like the city to go. So please don't think it's our budget and our feelings are gonna be hurt if you don't, you know, accept what we're doing, because it's your budget, we just wanna give you the best information available. Not only for this year, but as we start thinking about future years as well, you know, what's coming down the road. And we wanna spend a little time this morning, kind of looking at, you know, three years, some projects that need to happen, and just to so you know that they're coming. After we finish today, we wanna ask you what the next step is, so we wanna take your feedback and your comments. Just as a preliminary thing, we've done our best to work with department heads closely over the last six weeks probably. And we think we've got a pretty good feel for their needs, but obviously, we don't wanna speak for them because they're the experts, but we wanna at least convey what we're hearing. And our purpose is to make the best use of city resources to accomplish what we need to. Okay, we have, to start this discussion, we have a short training on budgeting, governmental budgeting. So here we go.
I am sure that's what I'm talking about.
That's how we feel about it. I don't know how familiar you are with our mission statement. To enhance the present and future quality of community life in Kaysville through the delivery of effective, efficient, and equitable services. That's something we talk about as staff, and we take it to heart that we wanna deliver the most effective and efficient services and build the quality of community. If you think about community in Kaysville, then to the next one. I think that's what a lot of people say when I talk about Kaysville, that sense of community, and I think that's what makes Kaysville so great. As we look at the budget, we wanna focus on that sense of community, and there are three areas that we wanna talk about. Operations. Manage use of city assets and resources for cost-effective and efficient delivery of services. Maintain the expected level of service. Employees develop and maintain competent, qualified, dedicated, and well-trained employees who are respectful, understanding, courteous, and sensitive to those we serve. And improve and maintain capital investment and city infrastructure, providing the highest level of service delivery and staying ahead of the maintenance curve. So I think the question is, what does that really look like? Maybe just an example of this past week. On Tuesday night, we had a fire on an power pole. It was about 4:30, 5:00 o'clock when it happened, and within 30 minutes, we had 10 guys from the power department overwhelmed, and we had some specialty equipment there, working on high voltage lines, lifting power lines up and taking the powerful down, and and to me, that's what that's all about. And then Wednesday, I went to my grandson's baseball game, and I went there to Barnes and Park, and I'll bet there were thousands of kids and parents and grandparents there, but the fields were nice, they were marked, there were people there, you know, that's what we're all about. Later that night, I went up on the hill and talked to the guy up there monitoring the flood situation, you know, 24/7, and they're up there taking care of things, and I think that for us, that's the most exciting part of being part of city government, is you're involved in so many different things, and you're providing something of real value to the city. And it's I think all employees, you know, take that seriously. When it comes to capital investment and infrastructure, we're gonna talk about maintaining routine maintenance schedules, and we talked about computers, we talked about vehicles, we talked about park improvements, you know, there's a need to maintain that capital infrastructure. So with that kind of as an overview, we're kinda maybe going reverse order. We wanna talk about capital investment and infrastructure. Definitely more of a higher level work, and then we wanna talk about employees, and then talk about fund summaries. And we think we can be out of here by noon, so that's our intent. So with that, I'm gonna, let me say one thing first. I'm gonna let Levi talk about capital investment, but none of this could have been done without Levi. I appreciate, you know, the last four weeks, the huge effort Levi's taken on this. I've been shifted some other responsibilities, so he's taking the lead on this, and just amazing, he does so many good things for the city, so.
Levi, happy bagel.
So capital, I just wanna define what we mean, the term capital, you hear that a lot just in general, and for our purposes today, when we talk about capital, we're talking about equipment, tangible projects, equipment that costs more than $4,000. We have to draw a threshold line. And so, there's a good amount, but as Dean mentioned, if we go back to this, really, there's these three main categories. There's operations, you know, the cost to just maintain, maintenance employees, the cost to pay employees, and then capital. So that, outside of operations and paying employees, road projects, buying trucks, buying trailers, buying compressors, fire trucks, that's all capital. So that's the first section we're gonna go through, is anything defined by capital. Now, there may be large purchases that are not capital. For example, we spend a lot of money on road maintenance, and that's just to maintain the road, that's more in the operations category, not, so that's not capital. But if we're gonna put in a new road, or put in a new water line, that'll be part of our capital schedule. So any questions about what capital means? We've really tried to organize it and make it clear on what's coming down the pipe, so that's what we're gonna go through is you'll see four years on the next few slides, last year, the current year, so fiscal year '24, and then kinda what's looking ahead the next two years. And let me back up real quick. I'm gonna break capital into five categories. So there's buildings, self-explanatory, improvements. That's, improvements are kinda like parks, playgrounds, that sort of thing. Infrastructure, you can think of that as water lines, roads, power lines. Equipment, that'll be, you know, trailers, air compressors, that kind of thing, and then vehicles, so. Let's start with buildings. So this is an overview of the whole city, all funds. The general fund portion is kind of the top two sections. This is all the building, capital asset purchases that we're budgeting, and what's kinda coming down the pipe. The items in red, we did not include in our budget, in the fund summaries, but we have them on here as talking points. Just to be clear, what numbers are, were included in the budget?
So the red are not included in the final totals, but they're numbers we need to consider because they're things that you.
When we look at the fund summaries at the end, those amounts are not included.
Okay.
So why don't you take a minute, I mean, we can look at some of these specific items.
I wanna point out, the first one, of course, is the fire station. There's been discussion over several years about when is the right timing for the fire station. I think we believe, and I think Chief Erickson would agree, is it's probably not this coming year. When we look at the service calls, they're about 20% of all service calls are for that area. So maybe this is something that could be delayed or should be delayed. Not only because of the capital cost, but the operational cost that comes with it.
Right.
So, you know, you build a building, you have to stack it. So I think that is something that is coming, but in our view, probably not as urgent as we might have thought a year ago or two years ago.
And we're good on the location, or is that still in flux?
As far as I've heard, that's the location.
Yeah, and I think that's probably the important thing above all, is to get the right location. And, you know, if we didn't already have a location, we wouldn't wanna spend money sooner rather than later to get the spot and reserve a spot. But I think the location works, works well. There's been discussion about the operations center, our public work facility, we have an assessment done, and this was everything. I mean, this was site improvements, rehabbing the existing operations center, it was a new facility, and just became out of our reach, at $36 million. But something needs to be done there at some point, you know, and maybe what we do is maybe just build up just a power facility and make do in the operations center with some improvements. So something that's coming down the road. Operation Center replaced the roof. I know you've been down there, and we've got buckets everywhere catching leaks, so if we do nothing at all, we have to do something there to repair that.
Good question. So $36 million, if we were to build a brand-new facility altogether, would that be significantly less?
You just, if we scaled it down?
Well, just building a brand-new facility altogether on the same property?
Well, that's what that is, is a brand-new facility plus
The $36 million?
Plus rehabbing the existing facility
Okay.
Plus site improvements.
Okay, I thought that was just solely existing.
What is the first column for? Is that?
That's current year.
That's current.
Yeah, by '23 again.
It's just, so it's really, doesn't need to be there, I can cross that out.
Yeah, it's unreal.
It's just information, that's all. Just to kinda give you an idea of what projects we budgeted last year, or what we're trying to finish between now and June.
The doors are this year, right?
Right.
They've been completed.
They happened, okay.
So they've been completed. You're right, the important column is the second one, that's what's in the upcoming budget, the numbers are included in the budgets.
So you talked $36 million, 'cause that's, yeah, that's a big number.
$36.
Yeah. Sounds insane.
I thought $10 million is what I thought.
Oh.
I'm serious, I thought, in my mind, I thought from last year.
I think, I think if you built just a power facility, I think you'd be 12 to 14.
Yeah, you'd be right there, Karen. This is, this number, if you saw everything in it, this is unrealistic.
This is the nicest.
Yes, the nicest.
This $36 million, just seeing it right now, like compared to like even the fire station, you know?
Yeah, it's not reachable. I mean, that was if we, if we were to do everything, it's not reachable, so.
So why is it so much more than, say, the fire station, like, does it just have?
Because it was a new facility plus rehabbing the existing facility plus the site improvements.
Quite a lot larger.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Cause walking through the existing facility, I actually thought the bones were pretty solid.
Yeah, I think that's why it's worth putting money into the roof, and.
I think as a city, it would be more prudent to improve the existing site versus a huge $36 million.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And our intent on the operations center, we replaced the roof, is, we don't think it's gonna be that much. And we would use existing fund balance within the capital projects fund, so that is not really going to affect operations.
That's a doable deal.
Yeah, it's not gonna affect operations going forward, so just kinda keep that in mind.
Can you use any of the power fund for that?
No, it's a cattle budget. The junior high gymnasium, that is something that Cole is working closely with the school district on when they remodel Kaysville Junior High. Is to build a gymnasium, and we pay a portion of that cost, and we can use it.
Be the green space.
And, I mean, that is something that we need to look for, because the biggest need we have in recreation is gymnasium space. So, you know, it's coming down the pike.
Okay, Abby, you asked a question about using power money, is that what you?
Yeah, can we use that for the roof since they're housing there? I mean, not exclusively, but a little bit.
I think we could allocate some. Right now, we just have it all in the capital projects fund, but I'm sure we could justify allocating a portion to the power fund.
I mean, whatever you guys think is best.
No, we certainly could, you could say, if that building is used, 30% of that use is power-related. So you could be, 30% of that cost should be power.
Okay.
And likewise for.
It seems that's what the fund's for.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just to have what bucket of money, but we could justify doing that.
For sure. And then I think this is one we maybe wanna these are commitments already, that's our existing debt service.
Those are annual payments.
Annual payments for the police station in City Hall. The police station runs off in 2031, and the City Hall runs off in 2034. So we're down the road, but maybe the fire station waits until 2031. And that's a long ways down, but those are the kind of things we wanna think about.
But I get the impression, from, I mean, the Chief Erickson says, we're okay to push it at least a year or two.
I think so. I won't speak for him completely, but yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think losing Fruit Heights has put things, personally, I feel like it's put things back a few years.
We had a conversation with Fruit Heights. Might as well bring it up. So they said fiscal, this next fiscal year, they're committed to Farmington, after that, they would seriously consider coming back.
Oh, they're not saying that?
Wow. It dumped the price.
They're willing to.
We're being recorded. Why would they say that?
Well, because, just geographically speaking, we're closer. And we do a fantastic job, and they had great service from Kaysville, and it just makes a lot of sense. And they're not committed beyond this next fiscal year.
Yeah, the question is though, do we?
How much would they pay? I don't know, we haven't talked about that.
They'd have to pay.
They'd have to pay their share.
Take anything.
But I think they recognize that.
They know they got a good deal from them.
We can provide better service than Farmington, just be geographically, you can.
And I think that would be great if we could hammer out a deal with them again, because it just makes more sense.
We can share a bus, great, and they understand that, so.
Maybe when the time comes, we can meet with their council and our council, because I feel like a lot of the heartburn, and don't, I'm sorry if they don't, I'm just listening. I feel like a lot of the heartburn they have is they feel like they're not involved in the decisions we're making, and I just think if we can come together and meet with them more openly, we'd be more likely to come to like a successful resolution.
Yeah, so Mike is, to your point, Mike, that's true, and if they come back, then that would be, probably help both of us.
Any questions on buildings, what needs are there?
So what's realistic, I mean, I guess, you know, when you see $36 million, you go, oh crap, you know, but.
How big of a building?
What's realistic, you know?
Was that 20,000 square feet, wasn't that what it was?
10.
Was it 10? I thought it was 20,000.
You have to remember, we got the bid though, at the height of the
We did.
Of the
Yeah, it was the worst absolute time.
Yeah.
The supply chain demand, I mean, this is when you're going to, when you're going to Home Depot and buying a sheet of wood for $50. Now they're back down to like 20, 80 or something, so. So there could be a life analysis that comes from.
Let's say it's a block building, let's say it's 25,000, you times it by 500, let's say it was $500 a square foot, that's way, that's a lot of that's a 11, 12, 5.
Yeah.
That's what we were saying, about 12.
Yeah. So you're talking about just the power building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'm curious, with the existing building, I think it needs to be renovated, even the office space. I went to the kitchen, and half the handles are broken off, and so I think the whole thing probably just needs renovation, and then I notice that their bays aren't quite big enough. I'm wondering if we could just keep the bays and then build on a big bay, just using the existing wall. Like, things like that, if we really kind of dive into like, section by section, the pricing that out, and what that'll look like as far as renovating, maybe adding on to the building here and there.
Yeah, just kind of expand it all.
Usually what you do when you have, you know, we can do everything, but usually what you do when you have a situation like that, is you go out for requests for proposal from several architectural firms who have done jobs of that line. Then they come in and interview, they do a needs assessment, they do what you need, then they go back through, and they do like a preliminary thing, and everybody reviews it, everybody sees it at that point, and you kind of agree to it, and at that point, then you put out a request for proposal for the design of a building. So before you get to that, you go through a whole needs assessment.
Part of that $36 million, that was accomplished.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I hate to like throw, I mean, I know you tend.
No, we've done a lot of the preliminary, but when it gets right down to actually building a facility, you still have to do that.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is, we go up for an R.P., we own all the stuff that those, because we paid those guys, what, 400, 400, 500,000 to do their
About 200.
Those 200,000 to do this cost, it cost $10,000. So you're asking if we have the information that they?
At least some of the information, I mean, at least through some of that information, I guess, and it's ours, right? We own that, even though they put it together, so we could use that as the R.P., so that the cost.
Right, but when it gets priced out?
It's a totally different project, it's a totally different project. Cause I'm wondering, the last two years, keep looking at this $36 million, and to me, it's just like, oh, no way, this is out of the question. But, like, I just don't wanna push off renovating parts of the facility, that makes it better for the workers, and, like, what's top priority, a new bay, okay.
And so it doesn't, part of the discussion of Dean or Levi, is, you know, you look at, you talk to the police station and the City Hall, what our debt requirements are, you know, what we're paying on a new basis. What would we be able to fit, you know, what additional, cause that almost gives you like the net top dollar, yeah, what kind of payment would we be able to do without undue stress, or, you know, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I know you don't love this idea of Mike ever selling land that the city owns, but right behind, right, we own that land that's right behind, and we're not even using the butts up against the garden or whatever.
Being used by the nursery.
I'm just saying, like, why would you just keep it though and keep bringing revenue in for it every year?
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't bring in that much revenue from it. But you're right, it's like $10,000.
Eventually, you will need it, I guarantee eventually.
What type of revenue are we obtaining from that property?
I guess, I mean, I just didn't, if it's never gonna get used.
I mean, if they ever build something, they're gonna be.
We're not gonna build, yeah, we're not gonna build them, it's gonna go there.
I guarantee.
We will at some point, I think.
We have too many conversations.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, all that.
No.
I was just thinking.
Henry was just shaking her head like I can't get this.
Nope, nope. Okay, okay, would you like us to speak one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
I'm good. I just had a quick question on the property behind. I assume that was just city property where the power, their storing equipment, so I'm curious, who's paying that $5,000?
Well, there's the designated shop area, that no one's paying for that, but beyond that, there's a, an area that, I'm not sure, is it landscaping?
It's rod, yeah.
Oh, so we own that, okay, I didn't realize that.
Okay, let's move on to improvements, next slide.
Well, this is, should we be looking to break that down, you know, here's, do you break that into different projects? You know, do you need, you know, as a new power, power building, if that's necess, I mean, how do you break it into different projects that?
I think after we finish today, and overall, we're taking good notes, and then we can say, we got the sense from the county. And then we can say, we got the sense from the council that they wanted us to take a closer look at what to do down the operations center, whether it be. Just build a single building for, for power or, or what. And then we'll get with the department heads and come up with a, a plan.
And what would it take to?
I, I tell you, I don't think we're asking the council to develop a plan. I think you give us direction on what you'd like to happen and we'll develop a plan and bring it to you.
I, I have two things to say. I agree with that approach and I would like to start moving to start. Immediately see what we can start improving. And then also, I would be inclined right off the bat to say. No to a, a, another existing standalone building for power. Cause I think there's resources that are kind of lost that can be shared to some degree maybe. And so I just wanna look more closely at that. Like, uh, the cost benefit of being a standalone versus sharings and walls and. Some resources. And if there's worms, that's a big property to attach on there.
And the advantage, if you only have it be a power building, is you could theoretically just use the power fund to build that building.
Yeah.
And, and have the power fund get, even if it's not power fund coming total cash out of pocket, that, that they're the ones responsible for making the. Payment on that.
When you do that, you would issue bonds, uh, revenue bonds guaranteed by your electric utility to pay for that.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking like bathroom, kitchen.
I get what you're saying, but once you start combining the two buildings, I mean, maybe, yeah, you can get a percent analysis, but.
But you're doing it on what you could.
Then, then all of a sudden, you, yeah, based off of like. The prop five, I mean, we would be.
Using flexibility.
How much percentage of that could be responsible?
That's a good, I mean, that's a good thought, yeah.
Okay, um, improvements. As Levi mentioned, these are, uh. Mainly park type improvements. Uh, if you look in the column in, in twenty-four. That one's already committed. Uh, there was, there was a P O signed on that. That's a station alerting system. Uh, so that one's already committed in twenty-four. Uh, there's a routine maintenance that we've talked about, capital. Replacing the heating and air conditioning system to the operations center, one in the wreck building. And then as you go down twenty-four, uh, you look at routine, uh, playground replacement. Uh, Hoth Hall and Quail Crossing playgrounds. And anything in blue is funded through impact fees. So.
Didn't Hoth Hall just get a new playground?
One inside of the.
I think that's what, um.
Where is that?
Oh, so we're paying for it.
In twenty-four.
Okay, okay.
Planned.
Okay, so it's in, but it's being paid for later?
No, it's not in, it's a replacement. My understanding is replacement scheduled for twenty-four.
They just replace it.
Maybe, maybe Cole.
It's just at the street from my house.
What's there now?
It's a brand new one. They just put a brand new one in this last year.
Is that the one across from the cemetery?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause my wife just went there, signed out with another one and she said it's. Wish she had a lot of issues with the news.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, the kids love it.
To small kids, I guess, small, small.
Oh, yeah, there's a small, there.
Maybe, maybe that, we'll check. Maybe that's. That just Quail Crossing.
That's how Cole labeled it and maybe, maybe there was a miscommunication there. Maybe it's just Quail, but we could clarify with Cole.
Yeah, maybe there's more improvements that are gonna be done or something.
Yeah.
Okay, the other big item in red.
Trappers Field. Skate park?
Where's Trappers Field?
Over at, we're gonna put the fire station.
Oh, that one, that one, okay, yeah, yeah.
Those are nice neighbors.
If you remember, we have, uh, an agreement. Uh, that we will take responsibility for that area. And the agreement states. Within three years, the date of this, the date of this agreement, a passing park shall be, um, established. City will develop the open space. Within five years, the date of this agreement, it will, shall include amenities such as. Tennis pickleball courts, basketball courts, grass, ponds, pavilions, walking trails.
Where are we in terms of timeline? Is it, is it your twenty-four?
We, we need to, need to do something if we just put grass there.
What is, I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
Trappers Field, over where we were thinking about putting the fire station.
Trappers, oh, I see, okay.
And we did some analysis, what that would cost to do all the amenities that they would like. And it was closer to three point eight million dollars.
Do you have the picture of the? Just the, the drawing that, that I don't.
So does it include a pickleball court? Yes.
Uh, I think it has two pickleball courts. I think it's got, um.
Basketball.
So like you, if this is the, uh. If this is two hundred north going right here, right? And then you've got the church right here. So it's got like, uh, uh, pickleball courts right here. One of the things back here that they put in is a, uh, a community garden.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Since we took out the other one and it's really cool. They've designed it so that there's even a spot for like people who have to come in wheelchairs or. Or electric chairs or whatever. They have a section and the, and that's, the boxes are raised up. So it's designed really neat. Um, middle is a field. They have conditionally a pump track, so, because in the contract, we said that we wouldn't do. Part of the thing that they made a sign was that we weren't gonna do a skate park. But a pump track is not.
Would be fun.
Really set the skate park.
Well, and the kids love those.
A pump track? That sounds fun.
And parking, parking is over here, uh. Bathrooms and stuff like that, pavilion.
It's a beautiful design. The question is, how much do we really wanna spend?
Right.
At that area. I think Cole would say.
Not three point six.
Not that dollar.
How about give it back?
Why don't we sell it and disperse the money to the original?
I'd be all, uh, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for selling that property.
I'm not sure we can.
No one's gonna buy that property.
Part of the issue is that, I mean, part of the issue there, I mean, I think that one of the things that we, uh. With maybe years and years, years ago, people made a mistake with two hundred north off I fifteen is. They didn't plan ahead on how they wanted people to see Kaseville when they got off the freeway. And as a result, we have a very unattractive, like, you know, first three blocks of Kaseville. We've got. Scattered buildings. We've got, you know, I mean, Dean to I C U would be the first to say, we should have had it be.
Oh, yeah.
Like, there should have been requirements that, that you have certain amount of wood or roofing or whatever, just like Park City. So I bring all that up because we're gonna have the West Davis corridor, we're getting off and they're gonna see.
We're gonna come and go.
Maybe, or, or come and matter. And so, uh, the, the, the park actually will be a nice, I mean, we've gotta be thinking about the fact that that's gonna be.
That's our gateway.
People are gonna see.
So I, I have one thought to that. So you know that park down in St. George we talked about?
The dinosaur park?
There's a dinosaur park, it has a train and it's meant, it's. The park was designed for not only just, um. For all kids, for kids with disabilities and whatnot. And I heard that the, the act, the church actually put up a bunch of money. There might have been some grant money. It's a beautiful park and people come from all over to, to experience it. I'm not aware of a park. Around Davis County that is for kids with disabilities and things like that. And so that could be something I would like to look into. If we could. Talk to, if there isn't a park, talk to the church, talk to different like groups and organizations looking at grants. To see if we can really develop that beautiful park and whatnot. I think it goes to your point, John.
Yeah, the question again is, what level of funding do we wanna spend down there?
Yeah, well, and, and what level of funding do we want to? What level of funding can we really afford to?
Yeah, and I.
And that's, that's the latter.
I don't wanna speak for Cole and you can clarify him, but I think he would probably say to maintain our current parks and to keep up. To, to throw three point eight million at that is just not feasible right now. So that's kind of lower, lower on his priority right now. He, he's more concerned with. May, being to ma- being able to maintain our current stuff and staff it and.
Can't we phase it like we did Pioneer Park, you know?
Yeah, I think that's.
Right, so we'll start with grass and a pavilion and then a year or two years down, we could add stuff.
Yeah, and I think the way I kinda look at the agreement is it says start the element. It doesn't ever say.
Finish.
Finish date.
Okay.
So I think we can.
And that's why we.
Continue for a long time.
So it could be a nice field for someone to go.
So as far as, as looking into like what I brought up, would that be something that we'd have a staff? Staff members start looking into or as a council?
Probably something we would probably start driving.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay.
But, cause in all abilities park, those are nice. They're expensive, but they, they are nice.
But there's a lot of potential funds out there.
But it also, it, it also goes in to what Dean and Levi are saying. I mean, you do a phase approach. Let's start by, you know, whatever. I don't wanna say minimalist, because let's start doing something that also gives time to, you know, to have, to study and see what grant, what other money. Maybe out there to help go into that phase approach.
And, and I, I think connected with the future funding is, that, that would be eligible for impact fee expense. But there's always opportunity costs. When you spend it there, it.
And what's, what's not going.
It's where, when you've got the Kaseville Gymnasium coming, is that better to, to spend impact fees there rather than here? Those are the kind of things we need to.
We need to make a spending free buck.
Right, exactly.
Like, for example, that Pioneer Park, uh, we're paying for that with, through a sales type revenue bond. Paid through impact fees and that one drops off in twenty-five.
That's the two hundred and seven.
Yeah, okay, so that's not into twenty-five.
That's impact fees, so it's not like we're gonna get that back into the budget.
But we have the money.
Eligible for parking products.
And just to clarify, we've been putting this all on the capital projects fund, so not necessarily general fund money. That's in that separate bucket there, just to keep that in mind, but.
As far as capital projects funding, are we pretty much to our max? With these, with the parks?
Uh, I, I guess, I don't know how to define max or, because, um. There, there are different revenue sources that come into the capital project fund. There, there are impact fee revenues that come in. There are transfers from the general fund. So the council establishes whatever that max would be.
I mean, just to give you an idea, there's a fund balance in the capital projects of three point three million as of. June thirty, twenty twenty-two, so. That's the bucket of money in there and that's just how you wanna spend it, but.
Can I get you to clarify one thing?
Yes.
Earlier you said that the red is not included in the amount, but as I look, the red is included in the amount.
It's included in total, but it's not in the fund. When we, at the end, when we show the fund summaries and like, what's the gap close?
Alright, alright, I just, I just noticed that.
It's here on the schedule, but not in the fund summaries. Good, good point.
Dean, one more thing, sorry.
Sure.
There is an area, um, between where I live and the cemetery. It's a canyon that comes down. A lot of people sled up the canyon and do whatnot. I would be curious to look in this, and see if we'd do something similar what Fruit Heights did in a trail, a loop trail. And I'm wondering, is that something?
Private property.
Well, I was gonna go talk to the owners and start working that, but is that something that?
I think if it's even in the realm of possibility.
I think I'd suggest you talk to Cole about that.
Okay.
He's probably the best.
Okay.
Lead on that.
And before we move on, sorry, Dean, um, I also wanna bring, and I've talked to Cole about this before, but there's a reservoir across the street from my house. So just to put that on people's radar, if that's something that we could try to do in the future, I've talked to Mayor Petro about it too, cause they did something similar with one of their reservoirs, so.
A fishery kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've talked about that. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
So.
It would be awesome to build a paddleboard and do things, yeah.
And a couple of these things, I think, I would like to move forward as well, to see, start determining, okay, what do we need to do? Do we need to put out an RFP or write one up? Do, how much money should we allocate to?
Yeah, I, I think we need to take good notes, because when all is said and done, we wanna simulate what you want us to.
Is that something that?
Yeah, cause I look at that, cause I know Cole is probably, I mean, Cole's spoken, he's called it before, he said, you know, maybe five years.
We need to be taking notes on this. What reservoir is that?
I don't know.
I was just.
But, um, I think it's been five years, five years, five years, the last five to ten years, I'd be like, I'd actually start them like five years.
Okay, maybe just one quick item off, as we finish up improvements. Uh, you look at the very last area ramp fund. That's the new tax that the council, uh, implemented two years ago. And Perry's been involved with that. The, the funding approved for twenty-four, um, includes. Basketball courts, uh, in Barnes Park. And then, uh, we all had restroom and parking. And then finish up the parking lot. And the parking lot, uh, was.
Was mostly.
Yeah, it's a hundred eighty-four from ramp to the balance through a grant.
Yeah, that, that three hundred and forty is offset by money coming from the county this year.
Does that include lighting up there too?
I didn't think so. Cause I think, I think there's a street light.
I think there should probably.
It would be nice.
That should be factored in since it is a ruralness area. It's for safety.
Yeah, but I think with what they already, I mean, project's been let, I mean, contract's been awarded. And so that would be in.
An extra.
An extra later, you know, you're talking, but it's not in the current plan.
Perry, did they, did, did they approve or recommend any other? Any other things?
The ramp?
The ramp?
This is just capital.
Yeah, we'll cover the rest, but.
And we get it on.
And, and they had a ramp meeting last week while we were in, um, the second iteration on, uh, on projects. I haven't.
Yeah, just to, just to give you an idea, in addition to these capital, there's another thirty-five thousand. That they approved to fund project.
Harmonic one.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll cover that later. This is just the capital, kind of portion of it.
Okay. Uh, infrastructure. Uh, these are the things, uh. That are, one of these are, are hidden because they're buried underground, but they're also important.
This is everything minus power. Power has its own slide next, so this is.
You look at road and, and again, as Levi mentioned, this does not include routine maintenance. So the, the crack seating and all that stuff, there's probably half million or better. Just with, with maintenance that's not included on, on capital. These are. Improvement enhancements, new, new improvement. So, uh, we've talked about the Burton Lane Roundabout. That they'll start working on, on soon. The Bon Paul, uh, project is wrapping up. And as we move forward, uh, with twenty-four through twenty-six, the, the two bigger, uh, projects will be Crestwood Road. And two hundred north.
Can you quickly, like, if you go down this really fast, can you say what's a C, like the floor underneath that, is that C road funds?
So they're broken out in the fund, so all that's gonna be in the road fund.
It's all road fund, that's money that we collect.
When, when we get to the summaries.
Okay, the summaries has that.
So if you look at, yeah, the numbers should tie.
I have a question. I was in a West Hatch Front Regional Council Board meeting yesterday. And all of these projects coming from the city that we're recommending approval of, we, we put in for those projects as well.
We're hoping that five million for two hundred north.
Okay, comes out of that money? Okay.
We, we haven't received anything.
It wasn't on the list, but.
We're on the list.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dean, where are we? I talked to our engineer, where are we on the two hundred north? Is that kind of still of the design?
That's what we're saying, twenty-four, so upcoming budget, we're going to start designing on two hundred north.
That's.
That's for three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I would just quickly, while we're talking about it. Like to see if it would be feasible to line two hundred with trees, like similar to Main Street in Farmington. I talked to the engineer about it and he kinda mentioned like, oh, that wasn't really, they weren't really thinking of trees when they were talking about two hundred. I was gonna talk to Farmington to see how wide their Main Street is compared to.
Focus would be, if we were to do trees, is to focus downtown, focus trees on Main Street as opposed to two hundred north. Because two hundred north is a heavily trafficked, well, Main Street is too, but I think it'd be difficult to do trees on.
You know what? I liked your idea though of lights, streetlights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And having a match while we.
Having those continue.
Yeah, I, I do, I would like to see them continue. Is it too late for that? I know that we had.
I don't think so.
Okay. I thought that was a great idea, Nick.
I agree, that's a good idea, Nick.
I'm, I might still just talk to Farmington and see how wide that Main Street is, just to see. If that could even be in the realm of possibility, widening the park strips a little bit, cause it is a really wide road and. Widening the park strips a little bit, cause it is a really wide road, and we are a tree city. Maybe Sickmore is all the way up, what John, John's point.
We'll trip Josh in on that.
We could put Quakeys up.
Yeah.
I love those.
Just an actionable point.
It's just big.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. I think there's a.
Okay, and another big project is the West Vegas Corridor, um, eight million dollars.
Yeah, what is, what does that mean to?
That's the connector road, it goes from.
I've already gotta pay for it all the time.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, cause this isn't red, but it's, none of that's in red, so it's not.
Well, it's included, but it's offset by money coming in to pay for it, so.
Yeah, connector road, like Levi says, that is not, I mean, there'll be some city monies involved, but mostly that is money coming to us already.
From you, from you, Doc.
We've already received five and a half million of that.
Okay.
And it's in the bank, we're collecting interest on it, so.
Okay.
We.
I thought in total, we had collected fourteen point five million for that project.
Well, we had to push some of ours towards the park, I mean, it's, they, they combined it, right? Right, it's part of with Farmington, we have fourteen point five million dollars in this one total project, and it's been funded through Davis County and through several.
Through your dog or several, several sources.
We just better not, just because we're the last, that was our big thing, was because we're the last one to go in, we better not be the ones stuck with the. Yeah, we wouldn't allow them to break it into a three-part project, it's all one project.
So they'll, so if there is extra money due, they're gonna have to pony up half, hopefully, right there.
So connector road, this is the road.
Yeah.
That is going from, from I fifteen.
Is it Shepherd that goes?
Sunset Shepherd. Sunset Shepherd has ties in, then it's nine fifty north, and then it goes up front, and that's the interchange, all the ties and all the interchanges. And there's that part that comes off of uh, Shepherd Lane, that comes over the overpass of the freeway, and it ties into that.
We're discussing to adjust our boundary.
That was the adjustment, boundary adjustment, yeah, that's what I thought, I mean.
This should all be, this is all paid.
Yeah.
But okay, here's my question, has anybody been in contact with Jeff? Like, I heard a rumor that he sold to I, to Symphony.
Jeff who?
He did.
Hanson.
Oh, yeah.
He did.
Yeah.
The Symphony?
I know more.
The, the Equestrian Center.
Sold a lot of the land, not the whole center, what I heard, no, he.
Maybe.
Is it Symphony or Ivory? I thought it was.
Symphony.
I thought it was Symphony.
Doesn't it have a developer written on it?
Yeah, better than Ivory.
Yeah, it's not like they can turn it down.
No, I don't think so.
Ivory thought.
There's still gonna be, yeah, there's gonna be a secondary by there, I don't know, I, that's why I was curious, if you've heard what the deal was.
Yeah, sure.
Cause Mike, I can't imagine that he didn't say, my guess, and that maybe this isn't how he did it, my guess was that he sold, that he sold the whole thing, and then now he's renting back the.
I, I don't know the, I don't know the deal details, what I heard was, he sold him all the pasture and area around it, he kept the barns and stuff for now. And this Ivory has the option on the piece next to it.
Yeah, they've, they've had that option for what, four years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Things change.
Right, yeah.
But you're not saying that eight million doesn't include us doing that, doing the angel to sunset aspect of the project?
Okay, so road, we shift to water, um, and these are related to roads, uh, if we're going to do the roads, we probably ought to make the water system improvements as well. Uh, Two Hundred North and Crestwood. Here's one you need to, to circle.
Okay.
The four point five and the two point seven.
Where is that?
Goes.
In the twenty, twenty five or twenty six.
Okay.
Coming down the pipeline.
That's, that's a big reach.
Yep.
I mean, not a big reach, but a huge reach.
Yeah, and when you look at the water fund summary toward the end of our discussion, you'll kinda see.
Right.
How.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, when the water fund revenue for the entire year is about three point six million dollars. And we need to operate on that and do improvements, and we have those kind of numbers. One thing you may wanna look at is bonding for those two projects.
Okay, so one of the things that I get a little frustrated with is unfunded mandates. So when you've given us these numbers, could you please somehow maybe tell us what the revenue stream would be for those? Cause I'm trying to.
I'll actually mention Jack on some.
Okay, and that's what, and in this case, you're saying it's bonding, but there's a lot of things in here. Cause we talk about all these little projects, the things that cost money, everyone up and down, and it's just unfunded mandate, unless you can tell us what the revenue.
Yeah, we're trying to get over you, and we get into the fund summaries.
Okay, then we'll get into that, alright, thank you.
So is the stormwater fund of two million and twenty five similar, or is that a different?
That one's actually different, because we received uh, legislative funding on that one. That's the one that Josh and Brad Wilson and others were, were looking on.
Yeah, that's, that's a good one.
Yeah.
So Dean. Um, so these are the water replacements that are, that are going in conjunction with the, the road things going on up here, right?
Right.
So, and, and I know we've talked about this, is it possible at all, while doing this, to also put power underground? Or does that not work that way? Like, you can't put power underground piece at a time?
You, you can, um, I'm afraid, that's a pretty.
I know, it's expensive.
Pretty expensive.
I was just not sure if maybe it was more cost effective, if you did it while the road was open, or.
Probably more cost effective, but still probably a pretty big reach. We could ask about that, but.
I just, I figure if we're gonna have them opened up already, if there's any way at all to do that, if, if it, then maybe it's not a good idea, maybe the power is better for it, is there?
Probably always an awesome idea, if we can afford it.
Okay, and then, uh, last, maybe is ARPA fund, we still have those fiber projects going on, and they're, they're funded through that ARPA money. I think we can shift on to.
And Dean, are, where would uh, sidewalks be? Would they traditionally be included in here?
They would be an operational cost, if I can show that.
Like maintaining them, yeah.
And the next page on infrastructure is electric infrastructure. Again, in blue are impact fee eligible projects, those are the projects that Brian's been talking about, the two big substation projects. And then, and then you can see um, some other projects as we go down there.
You'll notice it's kinda broken into sections, like the top is the impact fee facilities plan. Dean can probably speak more to it, but we've done studies, and we have, there's an impact fee study plan. So that's the top part, and then there was a long range study plan done, so that, this is what was recommended as part of that study. And then there's additional below that, so. Just to me, to stay on track with those studies that were done, these are the costs that are part of that.
And then we do uh, new line construction every year, and we budget about half million dollars for, for new line construction.
So, why do we need new line construction? So, I mean, and I asked that question, because for more, I think new line, I'm going into development, and isn't developer responsible for that?
When you say new line, it's uh, it's like, it's replacement. So if we look at the facilities, and they've been there three, five years or so.
Okay.
It's time for replacement, so.
Okay, so it's, it's just normal placement.
It's the definition of capital, because it's new replacement, not maintenance.
Okay, okay.
Uh, you can see one row there that doesn't have any numbers in it at all.
Yeah, I like that one.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good one.
That's there because they're calling her big enough. Generation facility, a, a lot of municipal power systems have their own generation. If you look at Bountiful, they have generators, which, they can shave an awful lot of heavy power costs off the top, when they can kick on those generators. I think Hyrum is just putting a new system in there. We have a, a perfect location for that, uh, at the Burton Lane Sub, because there's a high pressure gas line that goes right through the city. We could tap into that and, and generators there.
Yeah.
But that's probably.
Expensive.
Probably a fifty million dollar project.
Really? That much money?
That's it, fifty?
What, what would the ROI be on that? I mean, what, how much could we save by doing something like?
That's, we'd have to determine that, not initially.
It's twenty five years or something.
Over twenty five years.
And the Power Commission, we talked about that, and that actually, after talking about it with them, it sounds like it's something we really need to consider. Doing, but fifty million is way more than what they threw out.
I, I may, I may be wrong, I, I just know there's a expensive product mix.
Okay. One of the, um, one of the options, to think about, the guys that have been helping with the power stuff company, they, they come in and they build those things. They take on the capital. Oh, and then they, they, then they just contract. Yeah, they, they lease the power back at maybe a little bit higher, but then you don't have to take on the burden.
Of the infrastructure cost.
And maybe that's what they were returning.
Well, and, and, and that's how UAMs, I think, did it for Hyrum. They, they identified it as a UAM project, and then they entered into an interlocal agreement, that Hyrum just pays UAMs for that.
Yeah.
And then it doesn't affect city bonding or city resources, it's just a, an agreement.
And they maintain it.
What I'm just saying, we don't have to go through UAMs for something like that, like, I don't know.
That would be interesting.
Yeah.
Cause that's what that solar guy's doing, and the pitch that he's giving to the cities is, I'll, I'll build the solar plant, you just have to provide me with the land. Like the sewer bills or whatever. And, and he has figured out how to get tax credits and all kinds of things. He sells his tax credits for doing the solar, he sells them to other companies that are needing tax credits on their business, so it's like. It's just a.
Brokering to a next level.
It's total bribery, but, but he's figured it out, so then he just charges.
He starts fees.
He just charges the fee, and, and you pay maybe a little bit more than you would if you'd built your own, but you don't have to deal with.
If you have all the risk, take all the risks.
John, I wonder, could you guys talk more about this, and talk to the Power Office a little more?
Yeah, fun.
At lunch, something.
Okay, uh, next electric, or next we shift.
That's electric.
Next electric, next we shift to equipment. Not, not each numbers here, I guess these are just equipment items that were uh, programmed for the fiscal year twenty four budget. Uh, some computer uh, capital, uh, there's the lease purchase for the white area mower. We currently have a lease purchase going on with that one in twenty four is the last year. And then we plan on doing a similar program going forward to twenty five or twenty six, so. I don't know if there's anything else you need to.
Fifteen thousand for new equipment replacements?
Yeah, through a question of the police department.
Like, when they throw, when they give these numbers out, and, and I'm not, I'm sure they do their due diligence as well, but, do these tend to be a little higher than normal, or pretty exact, or how do they figure out the exact number?
Cause most departments actually uh, will get proposals.
Will get bids, yeah.
They'll get bids and proposals.
So this isn't the, the bid proposal number, is it? Probably.
Probably is, they, they probably um, reached out to suppliers, said, what is it costing?
Light fitness or.
And is that newer used equipment?
That's probably replacing some of the stuff out there, that's really quite reasonable.
I guess as far as the process, dude, like, is there any, is, is, everyone puts in their recommendations for um, the budgets. Is there any oversight typically, and where does that come from, the city manager that goes through and says?
You approve, approve the budget amount, and then when it comes time to, to purchase that, there's bidding requirements.
Okay.
And they'll have to go out and put it up to three bids.
Cause, and some of the stuff, I'm wondering, like, if there's equipment that's still good enough, that, cause not just with that, but everything down the line.
Well, and I, I think that's, goes back to our point about uh, get ahead in the maintenance curve. You know, with capital items, you buy capital items, and keep up on them, and keep, keep them maintained, and, you know.
Like even the standing desks, seventeen thousand? Like, that's crazy.
That's probably a new requirement, I would think.
It'd be new.
Yeah, that's probably.
That's just so much. The police station just has the, the sit desk right now, have the scanner.
So they wanna get.
They wanna get standard.
The seventeen thousand?
That's in twenty five, that's fiscal year twenty five, never sure.
I understand that, but it's just, it's just seems kinda crazy, and the public's on that, like, seventeen grand for standing desks.
It's, how many, how many does it, how many, how many does it give you?
My office bought me a standing desk, a waste of money, I don't like it, I'd never use it.
Most.
I'm just curious.
Facility on Mondays, everybody uses.
And they like little treadmills that go underneath them.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily, that's, I'm just saying, that's a big volume, I really love.
Well, I think that's part of your, as we go through these, keep in mind, these items, that's the stuff you wanna, at the end, you're gonna have to think, how do we, you wanna cut things, is there, how do we?
Yeah, cause it really comes down to what's the bogey? You know, what's, what's the end, and so, you know, where, where's the delta? Where do, where do you, where do you?
And then once you have a big picture of everything, like, where do you?
Cause we're gonna have to make cuts with the fire, with the Fur Heights situation. And I'm looking at some of the stuff, and like, we really need to start figuring out.
And that's, maybe where you can talk to the specific department head and get a little more information about the specific thing, and determine.
Okay, the last one for capital is vehicles. Separated by general fund primarily, and then into enterprise funds. So Chief Erickson is requesting a, a new ambulance to, to get in uh, in cycle. That's a twenty four month bill, so it's interesting.
Didn't I just receive a brand new one this year? I got another brand new one last year.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, last two years, last three years, we have two new ambulances, and we paid about two hundred and sixty for those. Now they're pricing them at four thirty two with a two year build.
And the money's upfront, right?
This one is not.
Oh, okay.
So this, this is one that is included in the budget, and it's one we probably, if you wanna move forward, we can order, but not pay for in twenty four.
I would like more scrutiny on this, after what we went through with the fire trucks.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
What do you mean, make one?
Well, I'm not comfortable moving forward with getting a new ambulance right off the bat, especially if we've gotten two new ones in the last year. Yeah.
Was part of that ask, because we were looking into building the new fire station, uh, this one, or just some?
Just true.
She felt like we need?
Yeah.
Okay.
How long, you, you, you needed, how long was last, and which life?
Yeah.
Something like that.
And, I mean, you know, when we first bought those first ambulance, they lasted about ten years, but then you get the new ones now, and they're running the wheels off of them in five years, maybe.
Five or six, probably?
Um, five or six.
Yeah, that's true.
Running the wheels, meaning you just need the wheels, or you did the whole thing?
They just get to the point where you just gotta fix all the brakes and transmissions and things like that.
And I don't think that's a bad.
You replace the tires every year, because you get some in mind a lot, but it gets to the point where they're out of warranty, and. That's what you look at, I, that's what I always kinda thought you looked at, is, once they're out of warranty. You kinda wanna replace them, that's usually on.
When you look at, when you compare it to a new car, though, like, we drive every day and the beat, you know, we drive it much more harshly than the ambulances are probably driven.
No, the ambulance are driven way more harshly.
I'm usually.
Way more.
You may be the exception, mate.
Well, yeah, I just, I just think we could probably slow down a little bit.
Best thing you could do is go sit down with Chief Erickson and talk to him.
The issue, again, we're, we're facing, you know, twenty four month build, that's, that's the issue that we're getting here. And the same is true on Derek's truck, down below, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for power. That's a, that's a two year build.
What does the Derek truck do?
It's a bucket.
Oh, the bucket, oh, the bucket one, okay.
Yeah.
So, if I may, um, I love our fire department, but, and Chief will say this himself, they're an expensive insurance policy. And, and I know it's unpopular, but I still, I think, would be interested in doing some sort of a study to see whether or not, in the long term, we could save money by going to a fire district with Farmington and Fruit Heights. Because didn't, weren't you guys telling me that the, that the county also wants to offload dispatch services?
Yeah.
It just seems to, yeah, it just seems to me that if we're already having to soon take over dispatch or go through Bountiful or whoever we decide to go through for dispatch, that it might just behoove us to take it all under and see if we can get a better price on all of it.
Yeah, that's, that's good to look at, I, um, districts aren't always uh, the cheapest.
Yeah.
I, I know Centerville had a bad experience for district.
Okay.
Um, but one thing you do, the district is, becomes its own taxing entity. And so you shift, you shift the tax burden from uh,
Right, right.
From the city to, to the residents, I guess, because it's a separate taxing entity.
Going from. Going from the way we dispatch now to unify or consolidate dispatch is gonna cost us a lot more, which is weird.
I I mean, just to look into it, I'm not saying I for sure a hundred percent am in that boat, but if we can save people money, I, it's hard, though, to want to, to give up the ability ourselves to try to keep those costs down by going to a district, and the district then works out of our hands, we can't.
Yeah, a lot of pieces involved. And then the rest of that is our replacement schedule, what we've established. So police vehicles, two hundred and forty seven thousand, that's replacing four vehicles per year. And if you have thirty plus officers, that's about a every five or six year rotation.
So, one of the, if we're talking about vehicles, cause I was a real proponent of pushing rotation vehicles and having that. But that was based on the fact that we were gonna buy like F one fifty, something that was very popular to sell, and then come to find out, we bought some electric cars. Well, electric cars, after you put a hundred thousand miles on them, they're four or five years older worth less, cause you gotta buy the batteries, the batteries cost as much as the cars do. So the, also the trade order is no good anymore. So that whole time, part of, let's get a fleet and do a fleet and rotate a fleet, they, and I thought that's exactly what they were gonna do, and they did the complete opposite. So now I don't know where to go with fleet.
I think police may be an exception, because we're doing the, doing what you're saying on the other side of it.
Yeah, my guys can drive F one fifties and.
I think the police wanted to look at, um, if there were efficiencies in using electric vehicles, and I, I think there is, there are some savings. But we still need to evaluate long term, and that's the best option.
I mean, realistically, as I said, I was hoping we'd get a fleet, cause, cause fleet vehicles go, they sell at the open market, the private market, for a really good amount, you get a good return, we've all seen that, we know that it works well, unless you pick a vehicle nobody wants.
Well, you're pretty example, Mike, the police department had an F one fifty, but they kept one year. Uh, they sold it and bought a new one, and then that cost was fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars, because we, we can buy them on discount, sell them.
For price.
Exactly, for a hundred and eighty dollars a month, that's pretty cheap, telling a vehicle.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're trying to do those, those things.
But I thought we were doing, and we bought electric vehicles, I thought.
And I get to my point to that, there might be a few vehicles where the cost benefit would be much more in our favor if it was not a truck. For folks that really just don't need a truck whatsoever.
You have to balance that, too.
You have to look at it, and so I will.
Okay, that ends our discussion on capital. And we are right on schedule.
We're trying to be ready, but we can't just try.
Want to take a five minute break? All right, we get the five minute break? Eat those bagels.
Nate, I'm with you on the trees, I think we ought to get trees on two hundred.
I think so, too, all the way up.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna, I wanna see how wide Farmington is.
Yeah, we're gonna go back to that, we should do that, still.
And they're planning on widening two hundred, two hundred does not need any more road service.
Well, I think that's debatable.
No, I agree, I'm totally with you, Abby.
I think it means, I think it probably just needs to be widened. Is there so much traffic on it, I think it'll be a lot more friendly if we add more space and more lanes, plus, I would love to add bike lanes to it.
Well, see, I'd rather have trees and bike lanes than keep it single lane, both directions.
Well, if we wanna do a bike lane, I think we have to do like a protected bike lane.
But I mean, honestly, when you look at.
Do you have any bikers going in or not?
I avoid all biking in this city because it's terrifying.
I'd go up two hundred north, but I try to avoid it now because.
It's horrible.
But if you look at Zion's, how many people go to Zion's, it's just one in, one out. And that's millions and millions of people.
Yeah, but they also can artificially tell you who can go in, they've stopped it so that people can't just drive in anymore.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the actual park, I'm talking about going into the park, the whole city.
Yeah.
It's one in, one out.
Yeah, and you see the congestion?
I have that.
I would like, no, I agree, you don't walk on road surface.
It will never be that bad on two hundred, is it, basically, what's on two hundred now, it will always remain that amount. And so I don't think we need four lanes going all the way up, it's never gonna get worse than it is now.
I agree.
And I live off of two hundred.
So do I.
And I pull off, I do it every day.
I avoid two hundred whenever possible, cause I think if I'm here to drive on, I would never ride my bike there because I would be killed.
I do that.
It's not bad.
I started riding my bike, I only, I've only done it once, but it's nice coming down the trail, but then coming from the trail up two hundred north here is like.
Yep.
You know, planning commission, when we did the general plan, we said, maybe we shouldn't put bikes on that main part of two hundred, but we should make a bike route through the neighborhood, just one walk over, what am I looking to do with that?
Oh, yeah.
There's lots of pain, cause you, like, you can't stand one side of the road, like, when you get to the first lane.
Oh, eat that by itself, there you go.
You gotta cross back or.
Yeah, exactly, that sounds good, that sounds good.
That was Justin Lee, he's been sick the last couple of days. He's been sick the last couple, oh, he just finally called me back.
Oh, did he, what did he say, John?
He said, I hadn't even thought twice about it, so, I said, well, Tammy, sometimes, oh, who's that?
She's a nervous girl, eh?
Emre, are you talking about two hundred obstruction?
Yeah.
Whatever.
We need to, you know, you always tell me, you know, people are.
You live in Kaisa?
No, I can have a morgue up in Kaisa. I live up on the street.
Emre's henchman.
Yeah, that's.
Right over the morgue?
Although I will be living up that way.
I just put two hundred calories worth of, and raw sweet on my bagel, two thousand maybe.
I pull up, so it's hundreds of them, and.
I just looked up, man, the calories that bagel, it's about two hundred and forty five.
Yeah, I've already tried and thought to think about it, especially when just doing this, they school.
Well, I take the square out, right?
There's just a limited number sitting there, you know, you gotta eat, I don't know.
I'd rather not have to worry about this, maybe you might reach forty five pounds.
It's always been in the plan to make it a wider.
Four lanes, really?
I was told that when I first started.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I've heard that, too.
I mean, you go back, you used to go anywhere. It's probably, our roads are so beyond what they really need to be with the traffic.
Seth, you need to ask the traffic engineer.
Yeah, but they have more transit, too.
Yeah, but traffic engineer is here, definitely, I was gonna ask with Massachusetts. Yeah, those are, yeah.
Well.
I just think four lanes is way good.
I think we should put a protected bike lane, that's what I think we gotta do, like the raised protected bike lane on two hundred.
That would be nice, it is dangerous.
Yeah.
I mean, I even, I was trying to, I was gonna cross a right there by Dylan's on the corner, and I didn't even do it, I walked all the way back and crossed down here, because it's still, even with the light, it's still dangerous, and I thought, I don't really wanna die on our street.
Yeah, I don't, I would never.
They need to chill out.
Exactly.
But, so Tammy, I look at, again, the whatever designation, we have to have two different things that we're doing for mental health, physical activity, and one other one.
Okay.
So I think we can, oh, and food, and I think we can count the community garden as food.
Oh, okay.
Food, as long as, if one of the places like donated some or sold it, I think we can do something like that.
And maybe just that.
That could count, probably the funds could count as exercise, or the mental health, it's asking for the hard ones.
I mean, if you're like her, we're donating space, it's like, well, I think she, we should do a fundraiser for that, how hard is it to fundraise?
Three to four thousand dollars.
It shouldn't be that hard, you're right.
I mean, I don't know what we would do to fundraise it, but.
And I honestly was going to go to the temple.
Yeah, put the pickleball.
I couldn't. Even if it was open, after you. Oh, you bet you did.
Yeah, they could pay ten dollars, fifteen dollars to put a couple on the tournament, sure.
Uh, I'll think about it.
Okay, that's a good idea, so you're on.
Or you can just throw this stack out. We don't care about our employees.
They're all gonna leave now.
You guys, I was just at a WASSAT meeting, they're increasing eight and a half percent.
Wow, who is?
Hey, can somebody contact, can somebody please contact Med Product and tell them I need eight and a half percent?
Everybody.
I will.
And and we have this mayor's text going around about truth in taxation, are we recording this?
Someone should contact the Senate, they're like, you're recording this.
Okay, ten o'clock, it's on schedule, ten oh one. Good luck. Okay, I I wanna preface this one with, again, we're trying to give you the best information that we can, and then you're the decision makers. Um, so as we go through this employee discussion, we want to give you what, what we're hearing, what we're seeing out there, and let you evaluate. So, so the first one is, is a listing of our human resources schedule. So this, this consists of all city employees by, by department and by name. We may have missed a, a couple if you go along there. And we've asked each department to consider what their, what their needs are, and what they see going forward in regards to, to staffing. I'm gonna say it upfront, so no one panics. There are several asks, not, not one of these is included in the budget.
Okay, none of these are included.
At the very bottom, so for this fiscal year, the ask was eleven new positions, and this is the total wage and benefits.
Of what that would be.
Of what that would cost, and, but none of that is included so far, so we've gone ahead.
And that's based, based on the direction the council gave us, we think that it was gonna be difficult enough not to fund any personnel, but.
Just so you know, these are the asks.
We still wanted the department to say, here are the needs.
Of course.
So, um, my department, um, accounting clerk, there, there are more and more accounting requirements that were being asked to me, and I'm, I'm killing poor Levi and Brenda, and there's, there's a need there, and so that would, that would be my ask. Go to Parks and Recreation, they're asking for a crew leader, they're asking for a shift from a part time to a full time position. So you can see the, the cost and then the savings.
Again, this is just, this is combined benefits, we're not gonna pay them eighty seven thousand.
Right, just a loaded rate, yeah. That's a loaded rate.
Yeah, it's everything, it's all costs.
Okay, Dean, can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
On the Parks and Recs, they, you know, like, one of the things that they've done to you is how many, how much less, uh, people they've.
Volunteers?
Well, not. So how much of, like, has he computed at all, like, the savings that he's accrued from not having those people around and to then be able to hire at all times?
We talked about that, and you're right, John, what the, the question was, we can't hire enough seasonal folks, so let's spend less on seasonal and hire a full time. And so there would be some, some mass savings there, for sure.
Cause I'd be much more inclined to give him, like, what he was asking for, if he could show how he's gonna pay for it by moving Colomay to Long Beach.
Yeah, it'd be a similar thing, like you see below, there'd be some savings there.
This twenty two thousand will be saved if we do that switch. And I, Cole specifically does have, like, letters that he put together justifying these requests, and I'm sorry, I should have printed those for you, but.
Oh, they probably did itemize the cost in the.
And so, I'll, I'll send those out, just so you can see his justification for these requests, but.
Good, so a quick question, so my crew leader, eighty seven thousand, that's with benefits and everything, what, approximately, what would that be in salary? Like, if you.
Maybe fifty, I'm guessing.
It'd be okay.
It's about thirty percent, thirty five percent increase for benefits, so if you could, rough numbers there.
Let's scroll around, and maybe you can see going forward to what, what they would hope, anticipate. Uh, scroll down, next, we've got community element, uh, I think you all understand what Morde's being asked to do in her department. Gonna ask for some help there, uh, public works, a maintenance worker. And then, uh, public information officer, that's something that's come up, that we've had discussion about. But, uh, we don't have a good, a number to tie to that, but, but again, it's not, not included in the budget.
And then Zing Josh Swermon TV.
Let's save that poor guy. Police department, they're asking for an office clerk, and Chief Ober's thinking there is that you could take one of the desk officers away and then.
Yeah.
Put them out in the field.
Right now, we have an officer full time in the.
That's being the desk clerk.
The desk, and they would go out into the field and have someone more administrative.
Could that be someone that departments could share?
Yeah, that would help us, too, on the admin side.
So, so this desk clerk could be scheduling for other departments as well, or?
For example, like, there's a lot of invoices that go out for getting reimbursed for overtime shifts that they work in other agencies. It's pretty typical in other depart, other cities where the, the police department has staff to do those, but right now, like, me and Cheryl, we do those on the admin side. So that would free up our time, cause we could maybe shift that to that new person, but.
So then maybe you wouldn't need a clerk?
Well.
I'm just wondering.
We could talk about that, yeah.
I was just, I was just wondering if you had less to do.
That was more for other things, but, yeah, that could be part of the conversation.
I mean, accounting for us as someone with a little more skill level, maybe incorrect.
So, okay, so you need someone that actually has the services, but this desk person could maybe be shared.
Right, right.
Yeah, like, maybe, could they help in Melinda's at all, I mean, I guess that was a request for a planner, something.
Yeah, I think her, I think her ask would be similar to what you asked about seven months ago about updating codes and land use law and that stuff, it's a little more technical.
So what, what would they need the office clerk to do, I'm just wondering, how technical is that?
I think it would be more someone just to fill, be there in person to fill the, in case people walk in, instead of a full time officer, so they can be out in the field. And then to just help with a lot of the administrative load that is there with, you know, invoices and other, other things.
Are you going to police?
I think it's gonna say it was just a justice or get there.
Yeah, I don't think.
You know, which is kind of a.
It seems like kind of a waste.
People walk in.
Not, not very often, there's no one in there ever.
This is something that every other department I think has, that we're lacking, is more just administrative staff, and what every other city has in their, in their police department.
And I know I'm looking in your eyes, but why does Chief Ober project two new sergeant positions?
We'll have to ask him for sure, do you think there's a need to?
I think, if I recall, his, um, just, justifying that was that we have a lot of younger officers, and he would really like to get more leadership, more high level sergeants to help coach the younger officers we have right now. I think that's part of that, two sergeants.
Doesn't he already have three sergeants? Five.
There's five.
Five already?
Yeah.
That's eight sergeants?
Seven, he wants to get two more in next year.
Next year.
Not twenty four, but twenty five. You can talk to him more about the reasons for that.
Okay, uh, next, the fire department, uh, chief is asking for a deputy chief, fire marshal. And then he suggesting that we create additional staffing, three, three firefighters. And some of that would be offset with the part time position. And then if you look down the road in two thousand twenty six, that was our initial.
That's the new station.
That was the thinking originally, new station. Pretty big members there, so.
Just to explain that, negative one ninety three a little more, so right now, we have a part time firefighter who is on staff twenty four seven, there's one shift filled with a part time guy constantly. And so his thought is, we'll take that shift off, which will then, will, will pay less to the part time wages, and then hire three new firefighters to fill that twenty four hour shift every day. And so, that's kind of the, the savings versus cost. And he also thinks that that will help reduce some of the overtime pay, um, and so.
See.
There's about a seventy thousand difference right there, but maybe a little less if the overtime pay goes down as a result of that. But that was his thinking.
We should really look at this as more like seventy versus two sixty.
And then, the last.
Yeah, because those kind of met together, that's the savings and the cost increase.
And the last request is from power department about a meter technician, and, uh.
Do they make that much money?
What's that?
A meter tech?
That, that's more of a specialized.
You would go out and especially on commercial customers, and you would make sure that all the readings are right, be naturally read.
Oh, I thought, wait, I thought they're automated.
They are, but they're still, make sure you've got.
Still have to go out in person?
They're trained similar to, like, a juryman, like, it's more specialized.
Okay, it's not just a meter reader.
Right, right, yeah, it's more of a tech.
Okay.
Go back to your mom, Paul Kittle.
You go look at a number, you write it down in your newspaper.
Okay, well, a-again, those are needs, we think, I think you, you can look at those and say they're reasonable requests, every one of them. And that, we cannot include them as part of our, our budget.
Okay.
I mean.
I guess my question is.
Right.
You say they're reasonable requests, you, you've just presented us eleven full-time employees in one year. That's reasonable request?
I think if you would go department by department and say, what are your needs? I'd say, yeah, I, I think I could justify, my department is a mechanic person, I think Melinda could do the same thing. You're right, when you look at it, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm looking at the big, because the money comes out of one bucket.
Sure.
And you just presented us eleven full-time employees in one year.
I mean, you're fine too, that, that is.
That is overwhelming.
But I mean, two more sergeants. Again, they're not, they're not funded, I know, funded, I get it. Yeah.
How, how many employees does City Key have?
Hundred twenty-seven.
So, basically, only ten, nine percent.
You know, three of those are fire, because you have to fill a twenty-four-hour shift.
Yeah, no, I, I got.
Well, and if we saw the data, say, okay, almost ten percent, but over the last year, we've grown ten percent requirements or people or something, just something to offset that number with. I'd also love to be able to see historic, over the last five years, how many people have we hired, that would help me.
We could look that, yeah.
To be able to.
And the biggest, the biggest bump there is going to be fire.
Yeah.
I mean, we've gone from three to eighteen in three years.
Three to eighteen in three years?
There, there's your big.
Because of paramedics.
Partly because paramedic, and then just higher service level.
When I first left the city, we had three full-time captains as all, and that meant one position, and one full-time chief, everybody.
Everybody else was on tiered, was, uh, part-time.
Part-time, okay.
And wow.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get into that discussion right now, that's too many.
Okay, okay, that's another discussion, discussion, okay.
Okay, so at what point, time do you, I mean, how, how do you?
Well, I don't, I think one of the questions you're asked is, do you roll with eight people? Right now, we roll with eight people.
Well, it's like last, me and Rich, look, the fire chief of fire department, we were talking yesterday specifically on how much the fire industry has changed. In, in nineteen ninety-five, if you got a fire alarm, we would dump that fire station, there'd be thirty people there, and you would have to bust your rear end just to make a vehicle to get somewhere. That's when it was volunteer and part-time paid, and there was a lot of camaraderie, a lot of that, that's changed. The call volume was in two or three, four hundred, five hundred calls up to fifteen, it's gone to a professional department now. There were times, as I was at battalion chief, up in through heights, with a house on fire, asking for a second engine, and I couldn't get one out of my city. So, there's been a transition from that thirty volun, thirty-five volunteers to happen to man it with full-time people to make sure we can get those pieces of equipment out there, and the band has gotten greater, so. I know he says we, we've gone from three full-time to eighteen full-time, but what we've really done is we've gone from three full-time to eighteen full-time and lost the thirty-five part-time volunteers that used to be there. Um, but literally, I mean, there was guys like me, Scott Parcell, Mike Eggington, we were in the city all day long, every day, you know, and that's how we got out of here a lot of times, but you just don't have that anymore, so it's just been a huge transition, and it's growing pains, and it's been a tough one to fund, and it's been costly, and I'm part of the problem, I was part of the problem, me, Scott Parcell, Eggington, and those guys in Larkin, because we were just here. And we went to every call, we were, we were, and we prolonged, happened to make that transition for a long time. But when you did make that transition, it's been very expensive.
But to Dean's point, uh, what he, what you're saying about we wanna send, send eight, does that mean we send eight fighters to each call, like, could we send less fighters to each call?
It's more about the staffing issue, if you wanna staff with eight full-time people, you may not send all eight, but there's still people here.
And John, you, you should recall the discussions we had, you send an engine out of this, I mean, you send an ambulance out of here, and then you send a paramedics with them, that's four of that eight, your city is completely, uh, the, before we added these extra people.
There's no one else.
There was nobody else here, there was nobody in the city, so we have created that insurance policy that has cost us a little bit of money that we're, if we have a, a fire or something, we are able to hit, take that second call, because all these other cities are in the same position we're in, they're getting calls at the same time, or whatever. We've had to up our game as far as that insurance policy goes, and it's very costly. And to go back to six, and that's why you got the eight, because if you send the ambulance and the paramedics out of there, you don't wanna send too many.
I'm not saying going back to six, but basically.
No, but I'm just telling you why the eight is there, and that's why we funded those extra, because it was a surprise, remember, when we funded those extra two positions, which meant six more guys? It's because we needed to be able to get that apparatus out of here and cover adequately for those.
And, and they come in threes, because there's a twenty-four-hour shift.
Yeah.
Yeah, they come in threes, but, so right now, we have eight, he wants to have nine, uh, right now, we have.
We would stay there.
Cause it's not, it'd be, it'd then become nine divided by three, so it'd be three.
This is really the final.
Three shifts of three.
Well, in this, this case, it's no additional people, really, because you're, you're staffing it with a part-time person, it's just moving up hard on the full-time.
It's kind of the final part of that transition Mike was talking about, where one, if we were to do this part, we would now have zero part-time staffed, it would be awful.
No, wait a minute, his intentions were to keep the part-time.
Part-time.
Yeah, those, those still help fill that fee for all the vacations, overtime, you know, overtime.
So, that one ninety-three doesn't necessarily equate, does it, if we're still gonna be paying the part-time?
No, because we won't be paying them for a twenty-four-hour shift constantly.
So, the overtime will be saved, right, is that what you're saying?
Well, that one ninety-three is purely the twenty-four-hour shift, seven days a week, that we pay a part-time person now. That'll drop off and go to the three full-time, and then we'll still have a, a pool of part-time people to fill in when people are sick, when people take off. The part-time transitions more into just filling as needed, as opposed to we, we staff one part-time person constantly.
So, where's the expense, though, for when they fill in, when, with those times when they fill in, for people who are sick and those types of things, because those?
It's, uh, that doesn't.
Huh? It's in the part-time budget.
Yeah, we, we budget for that.
Okay, okay.
This is kind of a.
Gotcha.
Snapshot of this piece of it.
Gotcha.
So, when they're part-time, uh, fill in as needed, are they on standby and we still pay them hourly? No, they don't get paid until they come in.
Right.
So, there's no schedule for them, they're just on call, kind of?
Yeah, they actually choose their shifts, calculate those out.
They, they would look at it, say, this guy's gonna be on vacation, like, when's they, can you fill that shift?
And right now, when it comes to overtime shifts, we have full-time guys filling in for other full-time guys, and then we end up paying a lot in overtime. And Chief, as part of this, he would try to shift it more to, if there is a fill-in shift, let's first offer it to a part-time person.
So, you don't have.
So, we're not paying overtime, and that's where we might have a little more savings in overtime, uh, by kind of shifting our mentality a little bit, but.
Okay, let's get there.
Yeah.
So. And there's the part, you know, cause this is been done independently by each, each department. Are there any of these positions, I mean, I'm looking, I'm, the answer's probably no, and then potentially the clerk for the police department that might be able to help out, that's what I'm hoping for. Is there anything else that potentially you hire one, you can do two jobs?
I actually think they're pretty specialized.
I can, yeah, like.
So, you get, you, you hire a lawyer with an MBA and they can work for you and Nick?
I mean, obviously, maintenance worker would be.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Pretty specialized.
Is there any training that you could do with current employees that could help them fill, like, say, Melinda's position, the, the planner? Is there any training we could do with current employees that could have them, that could help, I mean, I know they're all working pretty hard, but they could, that would be less expensive than hiring someone else?
Are they? I've seen a lot of assault, they're playing out there.
I mean, for example, in community development, you could look at a position there and, and give them more training on preparing land use code, when they're all pretty, pretty small now, but.
Well, you're well.
Okay, we're gonna. If that wasn't fun enough, we'll move to the next slide.
Oh, yeah, the next one, because this one you can say no.
Are those, are these a definite no, or please? I still wanna, I mean, I know you said you're, you haven't put them in, but can we still think about us?
Absolutely, and we hope you do.
I mean, and I hope when we go through this, I, I guess, I guess my, I, all I wanna say is, let's see what the, what we have, where we have to come to take care of our current employees without adding additional ones.
I think that's why I didn't want to.
And that's a, that's a good point, like, as we, as we've talked to department heads, I.
Okay, listen up, you two.
We, we told them early on, we want you to put it there, but we want, we're gonna let you know that we're not going to include it in the budget, because, and they all agree, priority is current employees. So, they, they understand that, they even understand that I, that we did not include these numbers. So, that segues into the next slide.
So, our HR schedule, right?
It would be colon market adjustment, is the name, right?
Well, we're gonna look at the HR schedule first.
No, we're gonna look at.
Right?
Market. Just to look at our first schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm one behind, yeah, you're right, yeah.
The URS.
This is the discussion we had last year about, um, what should our, what should our target be when we're looking at market adjustment? In order to keep employees up with market, what should the target be? Uh, we've used Utah Retirement System, and what they do is they take the average of the previous twelve months and come up with a, a number.
CPI.
Um, others use the CPI. The CPI last year was six point two, uh, the CPI for the western region this year is seven point seven. So, that's the, the increased costs that we're all, we're all facing.
What is the acronym for CPI? Why, what is this name?
Consumer Price Index.
No, Price Index, yeah.
Yeah, so this is what.
High, high inflation.
This is what we've done over the last few years, and what the URS rates have been the last few years.
I, and, and now, I'll tell you how it'll land. In my, all my years, I've never seen the wage pressure that we're experiencing in the city, ever. And, you know, there's an article I read last night that Utah is one of the top five states for the most difficult place for first-time homebuyers.
Yeah, for sure.
It's just, it's just crazy up there, I mean, Mike and I had this discussion there, too, everything is inflated.
Yeah.
You know?
But I do wanna make clear, the URS says it's eight percent, which they do, but they don't pay that, they pay a maximum of four percent, they bank till the next year.
And then, next year, they give two, so, so it's delayed.
Yeah, it's delayed, so like, next year, it's two percent, they'll go to four again, if next year it's one, and they need to catch up, they'll go for what it catches.
Well, they'll, they'll keep catching it up until that, until that eight is met.
Until the eight is met, but they don't do it upfront.
Let's go to the, let's go to the.
Did we do, we did it upfront though last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But let's go to the next slide, and this is kind of what I was referring to about, uh, people using the CPI. This is what people do, are com, are, I guess they're our competitors, I mean, for people. This is what they did in regards to, uh, market adjustments.
You know, what, I was just gonna say, what would be helpful is to know what their budgets are, rather than just this thing, so you gonna get into that?
The total budget?
Well, just so that we can care, compare our budget to their budget, to kind of, you know?
Yeah, we don't have that, yeah, we can get that.
Let's cross, and those benefits kind of are just.
Do you still have that slide that has, like, their taxing?
Yeah, we'll show that.
Yeah. So, you can see a lot of them targeted, uh, generally what the, the CPI was, was at.
And I, at the conference I went to, which, you know, all the finance directors in the state were there, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth, so this is just Davis County, but from the conversations I had, just, I think this is a pretty good snapshot, just of the state as a whole, like, both, a lot of people were in those, you know, eight, nine, ten range total for last year, um, on what they actually did.
So, explain this to me, what did?
So.
All the merit, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it, cause sometimes you gotta factor in, you know, maybe they did a less of a, a market, but then they do a higher merit, and so I think you gotta look at.
So, we did do an eight percent increase last year.
Yeah, close to it, well, yeah.
Well, and then the question is, okay, when you're talking merit, what percentage, what percentage of your employees got the three percent? Cause three percent is the max they could get.
And that's where it's not, yeah, like, this isn't total apples to apples, cause every, every city does it a little different.
I could give you zero, I could give you one, my.
And like, that three percent was not, everyone got an automatic three percent, but just to kind of give you a rough idea.
That, that is the maximum amount that we, we allow department heads to give to their performers.
So, is it with, is it within a certain, like, budget, so as an department, and I have a hundred dollars?
No.
And so.
By employee.
We budget the max, assuming everyone can get the full amount, and then what actually happens is somewhere less than that.
Do we have?
I thought discretionary.
So, what, what did happen?
Yeah, that would be nice.
We took discre, that's another thing, it's discretionary, we took out again, so that's not included.
Yeah, I, I don't know what percentage of the employees got the full merit, they were eligible, we can find that out, though.
I'd just be curious, my guess is, it's probably.
It'd be really interesting to know, because that, it'd be, it'd make a big difference to me if I knew a employee got four point seven five or an eight percent increase.
Whether they got any merit or no merit.
Yeah.
But, but also keep in mind, there, there are several positions that, uh, they're already at the top of their range.
So, the merit was the only way.
The merit doesn't.
Yeah, if you're at your range, you don't get merit, or you don't.
I mean, several long-term employees that are in that bucket.
So, the only way they get more is if they, you know, like a, like a promotion.
Yeah, a promotion or adjust their pay scale.
And, and again, we're just trying to give you the information.
No, right, I got you, yeah. I just, and, and I just come from a twenty-seven-year military career where I was happy to get one point five or one, you know? And since I retired for the last ti, you know, and that may be what it'd been like for a lot of years, but, you know, the, you know, in, in industry, I've been tickled pink, every year, it's about a three percent.
More than you were making when you were actually working.
Oh, it, it, it's, yeah, when, when I was working a heck of a lot harder as an active-duty, you know, officer, you know, three percent was, it's pretty sweet, and four and a half were actually eight percent, and.
I'd be curious what the, like, the military did the last couple of years, if they did big jumps too, and I don't know, so it's, you know.
I think they have to do some jumps to catch up.
They have some, but not that much.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
Well, I just know the government hasn't done a huge.
Well, what, I mean, what, you know, Sean as a civilian, you know, was probably two and a half, maybe three or something.
It was not, it was not a lot, but it was more than, than we had gotten in the past, so.
Okay, let's.
And, and so, that's, that's where I'm coming from on some of this, and it's, uh. And, and so that's, that's where I'm coming from on some of this, and it's, uh.
So what are you budgeting for?
Eight, eight percent is what we.
Is that what this next one, huh? Eight percent plus the three?
Yeah.
So eleven total.
And, and we'll look at the next slide. The next slide is to answer Mike's question, uh, the budget for the the meeting back in January, whatever that was, uh, what did the state? The state did a, this is House Bill eight, uh, effective, effective seven one twenty-three, five percent labor market increase, uh, three point seven five targeted compensation, uh, two and a half percent discretionary pay, and then a separate thing for higher education. And then they, uh, did some other benefits for health insurance and, uh, matching contributions.
What we should do, can we get education benefits? I feel like that's what everyone wants right now, like, you can get education in front of it at Target, day one now. You used to have to work for a year, but now if you start working for.
Oh, right, Target?
Yeah, they'll start doing tuition fees, like we.
We do that, we do that. They have tuition for people.
Oh, we do.
For employees that are going to get their degree, they have to buy a student.
See, that's what we have a market.
And, and you're paying for this now?
I'm just seeing if it was more affordable to raise, seventy-five percent or whatever we're doing.
Unless you wanna.
Sorry, Dean.
No, no, I, I'm just trying to.
Stand target.
Yeah. Okay, this, this slide here is a little misleading, because this is about two weeks worth of work. And on one slide, and for Levi. We, we took a look at all our positions, uh, one by one, and did a market analysis of the pay ranges. So it's not actual pay, it's the range being paid for that position. And if you look to the far right, we're at the maximum range, uh, we had about thirty-eight percent of our employees that were above average. Now, remember, it's an average number.
Above a C.
It's a C grade.
So we took each position, we had a, a cities, a bunch of cities we compared to. We took all of them and it was the average of all those cities, so, and that's what we compared with, on our range with that average.
So if you look at the above average, most of those positions, I, I would guess, are probably related to what you did last year for the, the police officers. I think most of those fell out in the range above average, which is, we wanna be above average, I think. We've got some below average, we've got a few positions that are significantly below average. I think our recommendation would be that, um, you know, aside, aside from the fact with what you do with market adjustment, cola, there are probably handful of positions, five, six maybe, that we need to adjust the, the pay range for completely. City engineer's one of them, uh, assistant finance director's one of them. There's a couple in power department, there are probably five or six that we need to adjust the range. That doesn't necessarily mean that they'll get a bigger increase, it just sends the message that
More of a runway.
That, that position is worth, worth so much, it gives them potential.
To grow them.
Now, there might be a few exceptions, if they're already at the top of their, their range, I would suggest that you move them with the, the top.
So how does that factor in with, like, the proposals with new employees? Do you have it kind of broken out to why increases to a position should?
Yeah, I mean, we'll get to that.
Oh, I get, that's coming up.
In fact, we, we can go right to that now, let's go to the conversation.
Can, can we get a little history first? Cause I wanna go, we'll see John and Tammy recall this, cause I, I, I have to try not to, I wanna be able to think outside of just one year, okay? So as I recall, you two helped me, first year I got in the council, we readjusted the entire pay for the entire city and increased it to a new, we went through that, we did a big study, survey, um, they brought in, increased a lot of the positions, and those positions had a lot of growth area and that, and then.
Was that twenty nineteen?
Yeah. Whatever our first year in was, we approved that, and we approved that compensation schedule, so we raised it then quite a bit, um, which was very costly at the time. And so, we have done a fairly recent cost analysis and adjustment of all the employees.
Yeah, we went from a great.
That was just a, that was just a different way of, of track, tracking it.
But it up, it did up the percentage.
Well, we did, we moved.
We, we did, we tuned it to us.
We moved everybody.
We went from a, a great step plan to a pay range plan.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
And it took everybody up.
It took quite a few people up. But, but I think what we're saying is based on Levi's study there, is the last two or three years have been crazy with what's happening out there, and we're not, we're not continuing to keep up.
Even when we did that, you were still making ten bucks an hour at the, at the, uh, restaurant, about fifteen, I mean, they're paying fifteen bucks. That's the only, only thing I'm trying to say, don't make it sound like we've done nothing for the employees, we've done more for the employees
Last couple of years.
In the five, four years that I've been, three years I've been here than they did for thirty-five years for me being here. And I don't wanna hold that back, I don't, I hate to use that example, but it has been significantly different than when I was here previously.
Yeah, I, I think what we're seeing out there is questioning, are we keeping up?
And I think it's, you know, if you look at these rates, and then you look, I think it shows with this recent study and reflecting that, other cities the last couple of years have been.
Done it as well.
Doing stuff and, um.
It, it's a, it's a fishbowl out there.
Oh, it is. It's just a, it's a wage war, yeah.
The minute Syracuse does something, two minutes later, everyone in the county knows.
Yeah.
And, and it's the dog chase mistail.
Well, look what we did with, with Chief Oberg in, in a police this last year, same kind of stuff. Yeah, I'm sure they're gonna.
And, and actually, what's happening, though, is carrying over from the police to other, everybody else, yeah.
Which we said would.
Yeah, well, that's the nature.
That's why you, you have a tough decision.
At what point in time does it become, and maybe this is just not a state or the way cities function, but like, in my, my kind of work, if you want more money, you have to come, you have to ask for it, you have to, and do we, do we do any of that here, or is it typically always just sort of decided and you get the email saying we're gonna pay?
No, not at all, I, I think we.
How often do you have people come and say, I need a raise?
I think there are a lot of people at Pincinelli Raise, and they say, here's our group plan, here's what the council approved, those college increases.
I mean, we switched from the step plan to go away from, you just get an automatic step increase, trying to be more merit based.
Merit.
Which is what the federal government did with civilian workers, uh, a dozen some years ago.
And that's where the, that three percent, you know, is, is kind of the merit based and the discretion of the department heads. Okay, let's go to the conversation. So this is our, this is our current plan, so fiscal year twenty-three, what you adopted last year. These are the numbers before any market adjustments, so whatever market percentage you agree to, that will adjust these numbers up that much. But these are just the ranges for current.
I don't think we need to spend a lot of time here, you've got it, you're back it, you, you can look at it. And as Levi says, our process is we, we take the existing plan, and then we adjust it based on the market. And then there are a few positions we need to, to target.
And you don't have these identified on here, like those five and the max?
I don't, but I, I will provide that separately.
Okay. So currently, this is just the, this is the twenty twenty-three compensation, this hasn't got any other numbers included in it, that the proposed eight percent inflation rate or anything like that, so you have that anywhere in this?
We could, it's not in our current.
We, we don't have it in here.
I don't have it in here, okay.
You mean, what it would look like with an eight percent?
Yes.
But what we do have is when we start talking about the fund summaries, we have factored that, that in at eight percent plus merit and three, as far as our totals.
And that's in the fund summaries further down.
That's the, that's the next, next section.
Okay.
And then at the bottom, these are just a few additional pay, you know, other compensation incentive program, that the city offers, just per diem amounts, mileage reimbursements. Your, your pay is right there.
And, uh, we have included a ten percent increase to keep up with market for mayor and council. So that's part of, part of the budget.
Wait, we're getting an increase?
Right here is the, this is the proposed current twenty-four amount, so that's a little bit of a misnomer, it is. Everything else is twenty-three numbers, this would be the new follow side amount for you.
We, we did everything last year.
Uh, I wanna say.
It's ninety-eight.
And she's never given.
My hell, she only knew. I don't say hell very often, though.
Somebody needs to go give Lee a hug.
I would be, I see texts coming in at four thirty in the morning.
I would be open to increasing.
Oh, that's funny.
That amount a little bit more. See, I would be open to, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I would like.
Let's move on.
Maybe not for me.
I mean, I'm sure, I, you know, I, I just, depending on what we do, it's, I, it's just, it's just one.
But, but, but the same is true for your positions too.
I, I know.
I actually agree with the council as well.
You didn't come in for the money, but you still have expenses and gas, and people, I think, put in.
Just bagels.
You know?
Yeah.
I don't know, and, and this is for future councils too, not just us.
And, you know, as we did the study, we looked at a lot of, a lot of cities who help cover health insurance for council members.
They do.
Lot of them, and we, we haven't had that.
Right, stuff, like, they have a, a place, what, what's it called, a rec center that they get a discount too? Yeah.
We give you discount for it.
A rec center.
We can have a discount.
We can have a discount too.
You're wrong.
Hey, dude.
Yeah, yeah.
You mentioned six positions that probably need to be looked at as far as increasing the maximum. Do you have those listed out here?
I'll just, but I'll identify those and send them to you.
Yeah, so we can star by them and look at, okay, what it is.
I'll do that separately.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, where are we? I think.
Health insurance.
I think that's gonna do. Health insurance. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Health insurance.
A huge piece of, uh, employee costs or, or health insurance. I think we've been fortunate the last seven years, as far as increases, the trend. And for most cities, you go ask them, they've been running about seven or eight percent increase per year.
Yes.
Eighteen, we had an eight percent, nineteen, minus one, two thousand twenty, three percent, two thousand twenty-one was a negative, twenty-two was a hold, and twenty-three was a, they're proposing a three percent increase. I, I feel really good about, oh, about these numbers.
Three percent is outrageous. That's, that's awesome.
I think we've, I think we've got a good program going, we've developed a good relationship with our brokers and and the University of Utah's our health insurance coverage, and they're, they're great coverage.
Yeah, that's great.
The cost share allocation is the city pays eighty-five percent of the cost, and the city, and the employee pays fifteen percent.
Is, is that state mandated? Is that sort of a requirement? Cause I know, you know, in industry, we used to do eighty, twenty, sometimes a hundred, now we do fifty, fifty.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've done for several years.
I think it's fairly common, you can maybe correct me, for cities to just a hundred percent.
A lot of cities do a hundred percent.
Do they really? Okay.
And that's come up a few times.
Do we do a hundred percent on the employee and then charge for families? No?
It's eighty-five, fifteen, all the way.
All the way.
Depending on, or not depending, regardless of what your single.
What is, what is that people, I mean, you guys have bad, I mean.
Would the total health insurance cost for a year for the city is about?
No, no, I'm talking about pre.
Oh.
In, in, what does that look like monthly?
About three hundred fifty a month.
About twelve hundred.
That's a, that's an awesome deal.
Yeah, that's a really good deal.
I mean, yeah.
It's a lot of money, but it's still a good deal.
Yeah.
I have a sister-in-law who's paying eight hundred dollars for himself.
Crazy.
So, okay.
Or you get insurance like mine, that's almost thirteen thousand five hundred.
So that's helpful, no?
Health insurance, obviously, the biggest piece, dental insurance, we offer that under the same cost share allocation, and it's been a, been a hold for, uh, four years now, no increases.
Yeah, do a mess.
Good job. That's lighting just the one. Bright light, I'd say, so far.
Right.
I, I do wanna mention one thing that I, um, highly recommend that you add, and it's not a huge cost, is. We, we have, we have vision coverage, but the employee pays everything. We have supplemental coverages like, uh, cancer, uh, accidental others, but the employee pays, if they want it, they, they pay for it.
Okay, like, what about, what about talking short-term disability, long-term disability?
Yeah, those are offered, but it's on employee costs.
Okay, okay.
With the exception, we do pay long-term disability as a city. One thing is an employee assistance plan for, uh, mental health, behavioral health issues.
They don't already provide that?
But that, would that count?
Typically, there are some small benefits, they get free, free visits.
Yeah, there's already something.
That's not, that's not great provided coverage.
So it's not, it's literally the insurance. You can go ten times.
Three times for free and then after that.
Well, there, there are two things going on, there's, there's the mental health crisis, which you, you can call a crisis line and get help, or there is coverage through behavioral health as part of your insurance plan. So you, you go there and, and you go to a mental health specialist instead of a regular doctor. What I'm suggesting is, there's something else called an employee assistance plan, which an employee.
EAP.
EAP, can go directly for behavioral health issues. And the cost, um, is about eight hundred dollars a month for the city.
Total?
Total.
For the, for all employees?
All employees.
Oh.
And I, I think in the long term.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that's a great.
That's what I, I think.
Is this the one, I'm a little confused, could you explain that?
I think the EAP, the EAP that I was familiar with in the past had its restriction, like, you, if you, like, say you were going for OCD, you could go, yeah, there's a list of EAP approved people on your EAP, you can go ten times to that person for that problem.
It's not in perpetual counseling.
But for someone with OCD, they would automatically.
The block quest health plan, which we're recommending is unlimited visits.
That's a great one.
I mean, it's hard, it, it can be frustrating, I will say, in the past, what was frustrating is that then you have to leave this list of people and.
But you don't want.
Sure, oftentimes it's pretty narrow, because these, you know, these guys have signed up, but at least it's something, and it's.
Thought we had a full-time mental health.
We do, but not for, like, families.
This is for, like, families.
You're, you're thinking about the police.
Yeah, but it was supposed to be for all the employees of the city.
Any employee, you see them, but not their family members.
But not, not the kids.
Yeah.
Their spouse. This is like your kid, your kid.
This is like part of your insurance stuff.
Yeah.
And let me tell you what drove this whole thing, is we, every quarter, we get kind of a snapshot of how our group is doing, uh, insurance-wise. And January twenty-three, we had we had ninety-eight members, uh, seeking behavioral health.
Ninety-eight.
Out of a hundred and forty. At a, at a four hundred and thirty-seven coverage, so that includes.
Okay, include families.
The whole.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-five, twenty-five percent.
The twenty-five percent asking for mental health?
Something sort of, you know.
That's last year.
But that's, that's families as well.
Twenty-two through twenty-three, that, that became alarming to me.
Not shocking, like.
Became alarming.
It should be, it should be higher, and it probably would be higher if they had the benefit.
Yeah, because of that, I, I felt the need to, to see what else was out there.
Do it. So this eight hundred a month would just allow them to just have it built into their insurance.
Eight hundred a year.
So they don't have to get a referral first, right?
They can just find.
Is it a month, right?
I think this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, for sure.
And there's, there's an office in Farmington.
Oh, really?
Want a quest health?
Oh, that's great.
Did you say a hundred a year or a hundred a month?
Month.
I thought it was a year, I thought you said a year.
Eight hundred a month.
We don't qualify for this, guys, just so you know.
Oh, come on.
We're the ones who need it. I was gonna say, if we can qualify for it, then I'd do that really. You can go so short if you want.
Anyway.
Love to see you, John. Love to work you, buddy.
Get inside that head of yours.
I haven't signed the agreement yet, but I think that's important to be part of our plan.
I think so too.
And it fits within our, uh, benefits budget.
We're touching ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's good, I think that's great.
Well, thank you.
And that's a great benefit for the families.
Yeah, good, I think that's everything on.
Now we're on the home charts.
Uh, okay, so. So, so, can I ask, can I ask a question? So we're talking eight percent for inflation and yet still an additional three for merit, so eleven percent.
That's what we've budgeted.
It's needed.
That's why, that's why you've got a hard call.
Just so you know, kind of the employee sentiment, I guess, I feel like they are expecting that, to be honest. I feel like we're at a, a point, and you can talk to department heads, cause they would know a little more than I do, but just in my conversations with, they, they see the URS rates and they kinda know that we've trended with those and they see what other cities have done. I feel like they're kind of expecting something.
They do know that they don't actually get that money, right? They, they talk to URS, but you don't actually get it. But it comes eventually.
Explain that.
Yeah, I don't really.
Alright, so what, okay, so if there's an eight percent cost of living at the URS.
Okay.
There's also a bill that says the max they can give in one year is four percent. So like if the next year it's only three percent, then they can add one of those eight percent that they did it to make it four percent. You play catch-up until you get it, but instead of that huge hit on the budget, they space it out over years. Eventually they catch up, they just don't pay that eight percent.
You're talking with government.
The URS.
The URS.
But what if they're always over four percent?
Then it just stays.
Then it stays at four percent.
Let me, let me clarify.
Well, okay.
If I'm wrong, yeah.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, but that is the, the target that we have used over a number of years. We have never experienced is that one slide shows increases over four percent. That's the target that we've used, many other entities out there have used a different target. They've used the CPI, Western Regional CPI. So, you know, if we say URS, uh, that is our target, but it may not be the target of the market out there. If you understand what I'm.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
The CPI was seven point seven, a little bit less than.
But that means in three years from now, when it's, everyone's doing one or two percent again, we would be four, if you want it. And so, it gets tricky, cause if you're gonna do it that way, you gotta remember and you gotta stay on top of it and no councils could come in.
It's actually easier to budget that way.
We could do it, but it's better than.
But as it now sits, an eight percent, everyone gets an eight percent for first year, that year.
Perp- perpetuity.
It, yes, right, and it compounds.
Keeps on giving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you.
But it's keeping with.
And then they may or may not get the extra three, depending on how well they perform.
But if like the URS slumps next year or, or whatever.
It won't.
Uh, but hypothetically, if it were to go down, could we keep ours this, like, we can leave polo alone if we feel like we don't need to raise it, right?
If it were one percent next year, that probably, we'd probably match that.
We'd be asking one percent.
Yeah.
Yours is just a target, we're not required to do that.
Yeah. No, I just.
That's our benchmark.
It just seems like a great gig.
It's a tough, it's a tough bill to swallow for someone that doesn't get it. I mean, any, what, you know, as, as a, as a. Do you get anything?
Any cost.
You know, John?
I have had the mercy.
In the last two years, I've gone down. Yeah.
The offset to that is usually government. The rates that I'm seeing on here are much lower than we pay on the government side, like for contract, for our employees that we have to hire, we have to.
Like salaries that we.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so the offset is, you know, you're making a lot less probably on this level, but you have a great pension and you get a bump in.
There's stability, right?
There's, there's more stability, there's more of the truth.
Well, that's why, that's why it makes most of that work, I mean, you know, because we'll have.
So it's steady.
Someone was gratitude to that.
That's just kidding.
Yeah, exactly.
I get it, I mean, that's why I'll say that. You know, I, I, I appreciate that I had a, I had a paycheck every two weeks.
And you don't have to worry about.
We gravitate because of that security.
Plus they don't approve a budget, if we don't approve a budget, do you guys not get paychecks? Is it like the government?
I guess we do.
We have time because we'll run out of money first.
Yeah. We can't just.
I mean, I, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Okay, that's.
Have to be on your porch.
Not to digest.
To your point, I totally understand. Two minute break, okay.
I didn't realize we had that.
Did you just not approve the?
On the council, yeah.
Well, it's just like any, just like any government entity, when the budget is approved.
This conference will now be recorded.
What was that, a screeching eel?
Okay, there we go.
The screaming eel? You know what I'm talking about.
Let's roll because I'm too teed to buy a lunch.
Okay, let's go, guys.
We're too broke to buy lunch.
Well, I could be part of the team. So, when we started our discussion, we talked about funds, the funds have, uh, are organized for a, a unique purpose. So they're governmental funds and enterprise funds. Uh, enterprise funds, as you know, are primarily, uh, utility-based and governmental are, uh, service charge or tax-based. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is the general.
I think you'll get a question, or, or, go get a phone.
Mine, Jerry, what do you need?
Press it.
John, you're distracting me.
Sorry. I'm sorry, buddy, that was rude, forgetting.
Sorry, Dean, go ahead.
Also, just to, just to kinda set this up, this is the long stretch, so sorry, there's gonna be a lot of numbers and stuff, so we'll try to get through it. But this is where it all comes together, right, we've talked about capital piece, we've talked about the personnel cost. Now this is going to add in operations and then look at it as a whole, so it'll show revenues.
So, so we're taking about a hundred pages of information.
Trying to summarize it, but.
Put it on twenty.
It's gonna be a lot of pages looking like this, so bear with us.
This is, so, again, the columns, this is actual, for in two thousand twenty-two, this is the, our current budget we're working with. This is the tentative budget and that's the change.
Budget now. Can you actually tell me what you're saying the difference between actual and budget is right there in the first two columns?
Actual is our audit report.
The audit report, so that's the amount of money that we received.
It was.
I thought it is actual money.
We budgeted, say, fourteen million, three hundred thirty thousand, but we actually got fourteen million.
You gotta be careful.
Twenty-two is actual, twenty-three is the current budget we're working on.
Those are two different years, okay, so that's not the twenty-two budget compared to the twenty-two actual, it's, it's the twenty-three budget versus the twenty-two actual.
That's what we actually spent in twenty-twenty-three, that's why it says actual.
These are revenues.
This is, yeah, this is just, but that's the.
Sorry.
That's the actual revenue that we received in twenty-twenty-two, that's your estimated guess for what we're going to receive in twenty-two.
In twenty-three, our current one, and this is next, so this is three different years, so it's not always.
So then let me, may I ask, what, do you remember what our budget was, what we thought we would receive in twenty-twenty-two?
I mean, we, we have that, we, we tried to pick, what are, you know, how many numbers do we wanna throw at you?
No, that's, I just.
Okay. We don't have to show.
It's not gonna show, but we, we could add that column in and you can see.
I, I was just more curious, cause if, if that's our budget, do we, you know, are we on track or we're probably gonna have like fourteen-nine or, or?
For our current year?
Yeah. I mean, I just wanted to say at the bottom, you know, yeah.
So, so to kinda clear it up, for me, in revenues, you estimated that we would get fourteen million, three hundred thirty thousand, that was the budget in two thousand and twenty-three. And for two thousand and twenty-four, you're estimating that we're going to receive fourteen million nine hundred and seventy. Okay, thank you.
And then, then the difference is from prior year, so the tentative budget, the twenty-four budget we're talking about, based on the current year. So, we're saying that there will be some new revenues available to the city. Uh, under the tax category, uh, most of that is, is sales tax. Four hundred and fifty-five, five hundred thousand dollars is sales tax. It, it was also interesting to point out, uh, the last three months of sales tax have been flat.
Yes.
They've been flat, so every month we've been seeing increases over the prior year, last three months. So, we still think it's a good number and.
Dean, would that, just as simple, would that be, people aren't spending as much in our city for food or whatever?
Not really, you have to remember how sales tax works, um, it's, uh, it's point of, it's a, it's a one percent local option sales tax. So everything you buy costs you one percent in sales tax, local option sales tax. Now, fifty percent of it goes to point of sale and fifty percent goes to population distribution. So if, if, if there's a dollar in, uh, local option sales tax, fifty cents goes right to Kaysville. Fifty cents goes to the state and then distributed back based on your population. Our biggest chunk comes from the population distribution, not the point of sale distribution.
Okay, so we benefit from the station parks and the, you know, cause half of that money goes to a bucket and then split to all the cities.
Is it in the county or the state? Where they work, so the whole state?
Yeah.
So it's like part city everywhere, all of them.
Every city. Yeah, cause half of that money goes to, and so small cities that don't have a big circle bill, though, circle bill wouldn't have any benefit of how they're developed.
Yeah, so we love station park, we love part city or, I don't know.
Yeah.
So if we did a buy local campaign hypothetically for Kaysville, would that make much of a difference to you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, half of that comes to.
Yeah, then it's half.
You get a half upfront.
Yeah, you get half upfront.
Yeah, some people over the climate.
And it used to be a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split, but.
State one more.
City were really out there fighting for dollars, so they split it saying, okay, those cities that don't have big economic centers benefit more than they had in the past.
How does that work, it's the legislature then gets rid of sales tax, aren't you taking it in there?
On the food?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would just be.
It would affect us. But they're, they're also saying too, and, um, that it may not affect the local option sales tax, just the state. So, I mean, your sales tax is seven percent, the local option's only one percent of that.
Or if they do that, they'll bump up property taxes, we gotta get the money somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, as far as revenue changes, uh, charges for services, we think there's some additional monies there. And what, what we've done here is we've tried to explore every option out there to shift it from a property tax to another way to collect it. In charges for services, we charge our enterprise funds for providing governmental services like fleet and IT and.
So like our, our, our pay, we allocate some of that to the enterprise funds because we spend time working with power.
They should be.
Yeah.
So we, we have, uh, redone those formulas and we think we can reasonably say we can charge enterprise funds.
So we've shifted more to.
We've shifted more.
So the city essentially is charging the enterprise funds.
Yeah.
So the services will.
So there are, there are some new, new revenues available, I, I think the key thing to remember though is last year, in order to make the balance, make the budget balance, we use.
We transferred.
Yeah, we use reserves.
Yes.
Uh, and we did it two-part, we did it for, for capital projects, we did it for some operating costs. And then at the last minute, we did it for additional operating costs when we lost fruit heights.
Yeah, cause we thought, when we made the decision to not have truth of taxation, we thought it was gonna be about seven hundred thousand dollars or so. And then, there you go, okay.
So, we're, we're playing a little bit of catch-up, playing, we're playing a lot of catch-up.
But we have factored down, you know, roughly a million, if you, if you look at the combined increases of all these revenues, what is that, about a mil, a million of revenue increase that we've tried to add into the budget on the general fund side, so.
But Perry, you have to remember that we got dinged in our audit for having too much in reserve.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I just was trying to understand where the one point two, cause I remember when we, when we made that decision and I, I totally agree with the decision. We just got it planned on the fire department at that point.
Insurance.
Yeah.
And I feel like in miscellaneous, uh, a hundred million, one thousand dollar increase, if there's any silver lining at all, interest rates are up.
We're getting a lot more interest now, so.
We're getting a lot more interest, but that also plays into the argument, start using fund balance, you lose interest earnings, so there are always.
That's true.
There are always trade-offs. Okay, let's, let's just roll here.
Could've put it in crypto, though, I really got it hurt.
I was gonna, let's not talk about crypto. I was a bit sad about somebody that I worked for and.
We don't need to spend a lot of time, but we've been asked, how do we compare?
That, this is probably what I asked.
For every type of case.
No, actually, I, I really appreciate seeing this because.
We're right here.
Yeah.
We're pretty low right now comparatively for property taxes.
And this is based on last year?
This is last year. Farmington is below us.
Twenty-three.
Cause we have so many sales tax.
I did not realize that, I thought Farmington was higher.
I do too.
And they have fewer people than us, I learned this week.
I thought it was less.
Oh, but quite a bit.
Yeah.
They have what?
In fact.
Yes, I'm not gonna let them forget that.
In fact, the next.
Your residents.
Let's go to the next slide, this is sales tax per capita. This is as of June thirtieth, twenty-two. So we looked on the, the state tax commission website, uh, total sales tax revenue and then we divided it by population and came up with the sales tax per capita number.
Wow, Costco.
Even if you had Syracuse, it's getting jumped on.
They're gonna keep going up.
Why, why is that?
Just development.
Westbound for.
Yeah, they've got Costco.
Fewer people, but Costco.
Yeah.
Costco.
I know.
We got it. But, technically, you know, even, you know, if you, even a ten dollar difference or a thirty dollar difference times thirty-three thousand people, you know, that's.
That's speaking a lot, but significant.
We're working on it, guys, we're getting into it just.
Okay, um, this is, uh, the personnel piece, general fund by department. So we've talked about the eight percent plus three percent merit, if we, uh, we've budgeted that full amount. This is the cost to, to do that. And you can see how it affects each department and what the total cost is. I guess the only exception is on the council, that's, that's the ten percent.
So this budget you're showing for six thirty, twenty twenty-three includes an eleven percent increase.
Twenty-four. Is that what you meant, this column right here?
Yeah, twenty twenty.
That includes the eight percent.
With the exception of those people that have already suffered their revenge, would not get merit.
Understand, but did you budget for that?
Yes.
So it's still in the budget?
Eight percent, not eleven. And how many?
It factors in.
You put it in.
It, it factors in people that are at the top, they wouldn't get the three, but everyone else who was eligible would get the three.
They suggested for that.
So overall, it's.
Eleven percent to all those who are, are eligible.
Where's the fifteen, ninety-one in?
Next page.
On our first page, oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, I know, I was just, oh, oh, so this is, so we're not even, cause right now we're deficit seventy-three.
That's just changed on prior year.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. We haven't gotten to deficits yet.
I have a question about the city manager. I thought, so, I thought that was coming down.
That's the.
This is the new. This is benefits and wage again, so this isn't just pay, this is all the benefits included in that number.
If it would've been under the, um, previous wage, it would be higher than eleven thousand, a lot of change.
Okay, okay, so it is coming down a little bit.
Okay, that's the personal cost, the next thing we jump to is operating. You can see by annual fund, by department, what additional operating costs are. And, and honestly, most of these are just, uh, increases that we're seeing. For example, on information services, um, remember the day when you could buy WordPerfect and you kept it for twenty years?
You have the discs.
It doesn't happen anymore.
Yeah, now it's a subscription.
It's all subscription, and we're, we're getting clobbered with that. And they're, they're twenty percent increases, they're not three percent.
Always a rule, we're talking this one.
Always a rule, we're talking this right here.
Most most of our support.
One of the situations is those.
Are there other businesses we can go with?
So you're still in person now.
Want to charge us less?
Oh, I just hook you in.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So this is the.
You're you're actually. Please, I don't think, you try to go to WordPerfect.
I remember WordPerfect.
Do you remember those more than you three?
Yeah, I.
Oh, okay.
I remember hearing about.
But then, sorry, I found you too new.
So a lot of it's hitting IT.
Okay.
Trying to draw some.
Yes, I'm trying to.
There is one thing in here that we've added and we we had a cyber security audit.
Yes, we did.
And we were one of seventeen cities to participate and.
Did not do well.
No, we scored, we scored okay for what we what we are.
But we had vulnerabilities for sure.
And I think we're considerably better than a lot of cities out there, considerably better. But there still was one recommendation for a program called Arctic Wolf which monitors threats on an ongoing basis. That's about ninety thousand dollars.
A year.
A year.
Every year.
A lot of wish I would have done in that business.
I know.
Because you know, all they've done is they've just put the program there and then they leave it alone, ninety grand.
I know.
As you will.
Every year forever.
I got a question. I don't wanna fall behind because I'm trying to keep up with this. So I wanna go back to this first sheet you showed, but like you've got something like Public Works in here at seven hundred seventy-eight thousand and that's general fund, so you're not, is that not including the enterprise fund portion?
It's just general.
This is just the general fund portion?
Yes.
And so would enterprise funds be in a different one or would enterprise also cover some of this?
No, we'll.
Okay, all right, so that that clears that no enterprise funds in this one, correct?
What what's the difference between the first, this page and the second one?
Yeah, what's the second page?
Sorry, so you see this title right here?
A personal.
So that, this is personnel.
I didn't catch that.
Employee pay and benefits. The next one is operating, so non-capital. And then the third, the third one will be capital next, we'll talk about. So those are the three main categories here.
So so explain that to me, like, like it's a city manager, okay, I get the first page, that's the wages and benefits.
Yes.
Then I go to the next page.
This is operating, non-capital, but just the cost to operate, pay for supplies, postage. Whatever, whatever you gotta pay, travel, all that's included.
Okay, so the eighteen thousand is on top of the other.
These are all in addition to each other. In a minute, we'll show us some of everything.
All right, thanks.
So I probably rushed that because. Okay, operating and then.
Did you take that?
Yeah, I was like.
Just an action stuff.
I covered my head and take the shine.
People wonder what we do all day, so now they'll know.
Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is Levi's, it was capital.
And this was, this is a summary of the detail we looked at in the first part of our meeting, right? So.
So for example, fire department.
Nothing over four thousand.
Nothing like equipment or.
I want a Yoder Pellet.
Yeah, so like that that six thousand's a copy machine, legal or IT, that's, you know, switches and servers. Stuff like that. The detail that we looked at on those first few slides, we looked at for capital.
Okay, next one is combined.
Sorry, it's a very silly question, but I thought capital expenditures were over four thousand.
Yeah.
And there were two expenditures for three thousand.
Sorry, that's split, that. Planning and zoning and building is is one copy machine that costs six thousand that we split.
Sorry, it was just one of, you know, I had four thousand in my mind, so.
Good, great question. I didn't even think about that, but really that's one machine we allocated, so.
That's why they're gonna allocate people that way.
So here is the damages.
Here's everything.
Here are the damages. Revenue is over expenditures.
Twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars.
So tell us, tell us what that means as far as capturing. How much of a rate increase does that equate to?
Property tax rate increase?
So, you know, you hold the rate or you don't.
And and when you give us these numbers, don't use a four hundred thousand dollar house, use an eight hundred thousand.
We use a six, six hundred. If we were to just plug that right now, all property tax increase, it would be a forty-two percent increase. And then the dollar amount would be nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents a month per resident.
Six hundred thousand dollar house.
Total annual increase for each resident will be two hundred and thirty-two dollars annually increased.
So instead of costing five hundred dollars to live in Kaysville with all the amenities, it would be sevenish.
Yeah, the total right now for a six hundred thousand dollar house is five forty-eight and that would increase to seven eighty-one.
A year.
A year.
Increase to live in Kaysville.
Hundred and fifty percent increase though.
No, no, not, not, it's a forty-two percent increase.
Oh, forty-two.
Seven forty-eight, five forty-eight to what, to seven eighty-one.
Seven eighty-one a year to live in Kaysville and have amenities that Kaysville City provides.
Twenty, twenty dollars a month.
No, and I get it, what you're saying, the the cost, but but also in one year, you're you know, you're doing half of what they've been giving.
Which, which last year.
Hundred and fifty percent increase.
Which is why I think it's a good idea to do tiered every year.
Yeah, but but even still, like even had, if we'd done it last year where it was one point two, then we'd be talking about over two years, we would double the cost of of living here.
Kind of we.
Just in two years.
Kind of divided it over the two years though.
If we had done it last year, the numbers this year would draw.
Be less, yeah.
Would be less.
Oh, because it'd be one point two, so it'd be.
Right.
Yeah.
I got, I got.
So it'd be less of a hit for sure if we had done it.
So it would have been about the same, but so over the course of two years, you have to pay a hundred and fifty percent. If we keep doing that, then it's just gonna keep giving.
If we approve crazier, if we approve of all of the budgetary negative requests.
Yeah, but that would not include the employees. Which is eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
This doesn't include.
This is, this is total.
This does not include the new ones.
This is not.
The eleven. Oh, right, right.
It does, which I think.
It does, yes.
Oh, I thought you said you were telling them it isn't gonna be included in the budget.
The new, the new position requests are not.
The eight, the eight percent.
But the eleven percent ish is included.
That's the bulk of that number is.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, but no, I know, I'm saying though, it doesn't include the new employee. Which is another nine hundred grand a year.
Correct.
Which seems like a nonstarter issue.
So just for clarification, we're basically two million, three hundred ninety-six thousand into the red.
That's the gap to cover, yeah.
Because I was under the impression that we would only be, would be, yeah, much less than that, about a third of that in the red.
Well, if we were trying to cover the previous year of fund balance, then yeah, it would have been.
Okay, so that's probably what this factor in. Or the eleven.
How much do we have on our fund balance right now? Did you, sorry.
For general fund, was it five, five?
General fund, seven, five.
Seven, five.
Right now, we have seven point five?
Well, not as of June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, not factoring in the current year.
Well, as true, if you look at current year, we're down about two, two days down.
Seven point nine?
Current year, I mean, we factored in that plug last year, and so current year, we're gonna dip into our fund balance of that seven, five.
So what do you think will be at the beginning of fiscal, what, twenty-four?
It's hard to say, but.
We still need to transfer money to pay for the fire truck.
Can I ask, maybe, maybe I'm the only one that wanna see this. But you gave us the the numbers that this would cost on a six hundred thousand dollar home. You know, the seven eighty-one, all that stuff. With the eleven percent increase.
Well, I could, well, I could copy right now.
Can you give me though?
Here, here is the two, four, two million, one point five million.
Bingo. So what is this showing, what it would be like if it was ninety percent?
Oh, you're talking like lower.
I'd just like to see what what COLA does, like.
I have those numbers.
What each percentage of COLA does.
So.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars per one percent.
So, right?
Hundred and twenty thousand per one percent.
Yeah.
Do you want to see on your one point two million?
So we.
No, 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 I wanna see what the COLA effect, because I mean, I'm, again, I would love to get everybody eleven percent. I'm just trying to see what we're like.
How much of an impact that would make?
How much of an impact?
Because we gotta bring this down, we can't just.
Yeah, and again, we don't want any decisions today.
Right.
And this is just for you to think about and digest and talk about the next steps are.
But let me tell you where I'm at. Lot of information, we still got a lot more to go. I don't want to just get this amongst this body at a council meeting. I don't care if we have to have four work sessions between now and then, right? I wanna be able to, you know, because we get in a council meeting, we better get to talk. And so I don't want it to be, this is the tentative budget, this is what we propose, adopt or not.
That's our, that's our very last slide is where are we going next?
Yeah, okay.
And we wanna have a lot of group sessions.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this along.
Okay, yeah.
Where are we now?
We're gonna go to RDA expenses.
Where are we now? You've just taken the dagger and the bleeding is going and now you have to believe you're out of stop it.
So that was general fund summary. That's just general fund. We'll switch to the other funds and it'll, they'll be simpler and we'll try to cruise through. This is RDA. Sure. So this is the redevelopment agency. Our only redevelopment current is the Smiths that we did. When was that? How many years ago?
Seven years ago.
So we are benefiting from that plan. We get about a hundred and thirty-five thousand in property taxes from that RDA. And most of it just goes into fund balance and current year, the sixty-two thousand, fifty of that is is projected for a new design on Main Street, I believe, is that what?
We want to set some design standards for Main Street, so that would be the cost of doing that study.
And then the remaining is just some additional operating for, to be part of memberships and professional technical costs. So when does that RDA expire?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, yeah.
Or if we hit the cap at one point, then we tell, I think we're gonna have the cap.
Okay. Any questions on that? I mean, that was fairly straightforward.
MBA, primarily just.
Well, this is ARPA.
We've talked about that. That was funding that came in and we're doing those major fiber projects. All restricted money, we don't need to spend all the time on that.
We got all the money last year, now we're just spending it on the fiber and putting all that in. And also we pay for Stewart's position, just so you know, the hundred and thirty-nine is to fund the police mental health position, so.
That, that's a good point because it's a four-year gap with ARPA money. So that position is funded with ARPA. When ARPA expires, we lose.
How many years?
Then we have to decide if that's something we.
We got three months.
We have three months.
So that comes out of that bucket right now.
Yeah, we decided more. Oh, yeah, road, okay. We, yeah, we talked about road, you saw the projects we were doing, here, here the sources are going. The road utility fee, class C road, which is gasoline tax, transportation, interesting. There's a reminder, this money, we're still anticipating coming in. And then we talked about the projects we had down fight, two hundred more than Crestwood. Operating, operating includes a lot of the maintenance we're doing.
So it looks to me like this is a wash, one hundred percent wash page, okay?
Yeah.
Which that should be, right?
Yeah.
The only thing that would be different is if we had some extra money and decided to do an extra road project or something.
It's restricted.
Yeah, okay.
Hey.
Okay, next one.
Sorry.
We talked about ramp.
We created a new special revenue fund. We're gonna, just FYI. So it's not part of the general fund, it's now its own separate revenue fund that can track these things.
When you, when you look at ramp taxes, right now they're trending quite a bit higher than that. They're turning about four fifty.
Yeah, we kept, we kept it for this year, we kept it artificially low, just to.
And we'd recommend you continue to do that because that will just help us build up reserves. So when we get a major project, we'll have those funds to do that.
So what we've, what they agreed to do just the other night, that thirty-five thousand is to fund. How do you say that, Oaxaca?
Oaxaca.
Oaxaca. Ten, ten thousand for Oaxaca program.
It's Oaxaca.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a group, it's a cultural group that they have. They do a, like a fair or, this will help fund an event that they have.
Okay.
You know, it's. You know what, it's, it's for Mexico, you know, the best cheese in the world.
One of my favorite places in the entire world is Oaxaca, Mexico.
Is it, their cheese is the best cheese in the world.
And and they do a huge event to ask me on.
Yeah, I can.
Park, everywhere, it's nice.
Yeah, and this will fund it as a, through ramp. They've done it on their own in a sense, so this is.
Well, that's great.
This is a good thing.
This is.
And not, not much.
Ten thousand for Oaxaca, forty-five hundred for Francis Peak after school program, a thousand dollars for the Harmonic Winds of Utah. Ten thousand for the Kaysville Historic Preservation.
What are they doing with that?
Historical markers, it says. I don't know if that means.
Oh, I do know, yeah, there were, that, yeah, that's a, basically they're gonna go to the, the, for like twelve or thirteen of the historical sites in Kaysville and have like a plaque, a bronze plaque in front, so like.
That's a good idea.
It was a pretty.
When you walk in front of it, you can read about like, you know, who lived there, where it is.
That's cool.
And then ninety-nine hundred for muse, online museum.
Angel?
No, the angel thing's gonna be separate.
Okay, and the online museum is for what they're hosting in?
I'm not exactly sure.
The ninety-nine hundred for the online museum.
I think, I think they're creating, they're creating an, the virtual, like they're documenting and taking pictures of all of like Kaysville's story.
It's really interesting stuff.
They're trying to talk to people, get stories as well.
And get stories.
Why didn't you go over to Lakeview Family History Center and do it there?
Yeah. And then the capital, we talked about before, Barnes Park, basketball courts, two twenty-five.
Yeah.
And rail trail restrooms for about forty thousand.
Yeah, and that's for the one over off of Flint Street by, with the rail. So there's a restaurant today. Yeah, but near Mike's house here.
Where is it?
On Flint Street, near Mike, where, where, where land comes from, Flint Street.
Yeah.
There's that area there that's, it's real eyesore. They're gonna put in a restroom there for the trail.
That'd be perfect.
And then eventually, maybe like, they might put like a little, we talked about, they're like a little bike track, bike, bike track there to, or skate park right there.
And and we talked about that, they talked about that during the thing, but that would just be down the road.
It'd be down the road, yeah, but now that you have the bathrooms, it'd just make it that much easier to do it.
Yeah, we gotta get rid of the.
Yeah, I'd say it's ugly.
MBA.
City authorities primarily the payments that we've talked about for the police station and city hall. This is money that's coming from the general fund. It's a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So just to, you know, when we're looking at all these projects and we're trying to figure out where revenue source you know, our revenue is, it's good to realize when these things expire, when you're thinking about other things like a fire station or those types of things. Um, because you can only have so many bonds out in one city at one time and you're, you've gone out of hand, okay? You, you, you find out what you have is a spending problem. And so you need to look at these and your needs that we had to do. Like we have bonds for those, but you, you probably should plan your next bonding expenditures or needs based on when you get a revenue source that's going to come back, that's gonna go away from somewhere else.
You're creating a revenue, revenue source or way to these.
Yeah, because, and creating a revenue source anytime you bond is basically a tax increase. Separate from what this one point two million dollars is we're talking about, or two.
I mean, to that point too, I mean, I would love to get to the point of the city to where we have, we are meeting all of our needs, but we are putting away funds and increasing our road funding, increasing our sidewalk repair funding. So we actually see real more quick improvements across the city.
And and just in reality, I'm not trying to, but in reality, that same exact issue came up about six or eight. And, and just in reality, I'm not trying to, but in reality, that same exact issue came up about six or eight years ago and that council, I think you were on at that time, created the road fund. Before that, it was just C road funds and general fund monies only. And creating that road impact fee has made it. So we've been able to do so much more.
We see a big.
Oh, unbelievable.
What's going on with the lawsuits?
Cause the roads that I drive.
Yeah.
So bad.
Yeah.
Transportation.
The road.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Threw it out.
Yes.
High five.
Yeah, and then, um, there was a response period of time and they just said no.
Good.
So we're good with that. Our road fee is.
There was, there was a lot of angst on.
There was gonna be serious things, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
The debt service, uh, we're, we're still paying to the fire station, fire truck, sorry, uh, ambulance debt service. And then higher part debt service.
These are more of those annual payments that we're making.
So this, this amount too is coming from the general fund.
So just a question, because you, you had a proposal for a new ambulance in here. What is the old one paid for?
One year.
One more year?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and then it's paid for? So then we would have a revenue source at that time.
And, and that's why I think, as we start looking at ways to make this work, we, we would kick out that ambulance and we'd say, let's wait a year. Let's do a lease purchase at eighty thousand a year rather than four hundred thousand dollar hit.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's a good idea.
And I would even say.
Those are the kind of things we wanna.
Right, that's a good idea.
But then we'll save in a couple of years and just, cause I think we could last so much longer.
And it would be nice, like you say, if you could go a couple more years, you still had that revenue source that you could build up in a capital improvement fund for that ambulance rather than just immediately. And that's where I'm trying to find out where some of these are expiring and we need to replace.
And I think if you go back and look at that, the capital schedule, we showed the expiration rate.
If it drops off, then that's.
It's a mess.
Cause I hate, I mean, it seems like if you drop something off and you don't earmark it to stay there, then it gets pushed into the general fund and then when it comes time to do something, you gotta come up with all this good money.
Right, you get some.
I think that's a good actionable item to, that ambulance, put that on pause immediately, right off the bat and.
Two hundred thousand dollars right there.
Okay, what's next? We definitely talked, did you talk about?
We haven't talked about this, but this is the capital projects fund. So that eight hundred and forty-five, that's the summary of kind of the detail we looked at earlier. That's six hundred and fifty thousand for the op center, roof replacement, hundred and fifty thousand for the park, the playground and replacements, uh, forty-five thousand for Wilderness Park Trail. That's that eight forty-five. This two oh seven is what we transfer out of the capital to the debt service we just looked at to pay for that. To pay for the Pioneer Park. So there's the money coming in. Here's it, here it is coming out of the capital projects fund.
What page are you going on?
Sorry, capital. What does it say on the top there? That's where we're at, right? Capital Projects Fund.
I don't wanna get behind.
So. Any questions on that?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
You show this here, and, and just a question as to what, what, but this is the revenue and it's one, one million fifty-two thousand.
Yes.
And you're showing expenditures of one million fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
But yeah, these are impact fees. Are, is everything that you've got included in this impact fee eligible?
The only things in this that are impact fee eligible are the, the Halls Hollow and Whale Crossing Playgrounds. That's a hundred and fifty thousand. And I, I guess the Wilderness Park Trail.
Wilderness Park and Pioneer Park is part of the tax fees as well.
Yeah, that, that two oh seven that gets transferred over, that's also impact fees. So really the only thing not impact fees on this is the six hundred and fifty thousand of the op center roof replacement.
Where is that here?
It's built into that eight forty-five.
So you go back to capital, where we started with, you'll see the six fifty plus.
And the detail of that is, is the sheets we looked at earlier.
Earlier, it's where you're getting the one million, well, you're getting a million fifty-two right here.
Yeah.
But that's coming from?
The capital listing.
Okay, from fund balance. From the beginning. This, you're gonna transfer five hundred and eighty thousand from fund balance from the previous to get to this revenue?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yes.
Mine was really a transfer, but you, you said fund balance.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, here's the little one perpetual care, I wanna fund, uh, just minor items. Continue their, um, looking at a, what do they call that?
Memorial Cremation Garden. A section of the cemetery will be designated for cremation urns and so this, this twenty-five right here of capital is to start a design for the cremation garden, which will have additional costs over the next year. There's like four phases down the road.
Would that be like a putting green? I mean, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some, it's gonna tie into this thing that we're talking about where it's gonna, where they're gonna have that angel in the middle. That's ceremony for that, for kids who have died when, you know, young men or not. And ultimately the cremating is becoming much more popular and it saves, saves us.
Saving space.
Space and stuff. So it's a, it's a good.
That's just the initial start, the design. Over the next several years, there'll be more to build on.
Mike, there'll be a putt putt course and you charge him half.
So, so I guess.
You use eyeballs.
Yeah, the question I'm having is. Is this something that you've included in the budget because you're planning on doing it? Or is this something that is a wish that we would have in the future?
No, it's in the budget because we're planning on doing it.
Okay, alright. So it's not one of those items that we're cutting out, you know, has option to be taken out.
And again, perpetual care, most of the interest earnings that we're using to pay for this.
Okay.
Okay, the last one, governmental funds is library endowment. That's where we have an endowment, we earn interest. And then based on the request from Davis County Library, we, we augment the services of the Caswell Library.
Right.
And how much longer will that go?
As long as we have an endowment forever.
That's per, that's a perpetuity, yeah.
And is, are we just having the interest that we make off of it is what we spend, so it will never go away?
We, we take the corpus and then each year we add ten percent of our interest earnings to the, to the corpus. And then interest earnings are available for the.
Or the, like when we gave the twenties thousand to the library. So it's ongoing.
Yeah, okay, that's all governmental funds. Now we're switching to, uh, the enterprise funds. Uh, the first one here is water and this one's a little bit different because on one page we've got, we're showing both revenues and the expenses. So you can see, uh, under the tentative budget column, uh, water sales are about three point six million dollars a year. Uh, we, we have a plug here on this one as well. So pay attention to the endowment. That is a plug in order to make the, the water fund work. And a lot of it is, is capital expenditures that we have to be up on already.
I think, give me an example of the retained earning, retained earnings.
Fund balance.
Okay, that's fund balance. It's actually money that's sitting there like a savings account.
Stipping into our money to pay for current projects.
The accounting term in enterprise funds is retained earnings, not fund balance.
And right now?
Yes.
We have a million four in there and you're planning on taking s- four hundred, seven hundred and sixty-five.
Right now, we have one point two million of impact fee balance.
Okay.
Water and four point two of unrestricted balance. So there's six million of unrestricted. So that's what we're plugging through the year.
So we're gonna, we're gonna use some of our reserves to make the budget work. But keep in mind that down the road, we've got those two big projects.
Yeah. Giant.
So that's not in addition to the two million plus that we are short. This is the fix.
This is all capital.
Yeah, yeah, this is more, yeah.
Yeah.
So is there, this is where I get really, really confused.
Me too.
Because there is literally four million dollars to, that's in a fund balance that's not actually earmarked to go anywhere.
No, yeah, correct.
But is it, but four million, are you talking four million just underwater or? Just underwater. Just underwater, there is four million dollars that is not spoken for, for anything.
Four, I say it's spoken for.
Look what's coming down the pipe in the water fund. And what are those projects? I don't even know what they are.
You did retire on two hundred north.
Yeah.
You know what? If there is anything I can tell you, is tell your kids, don't be brain surgeons. Tell them to buy hydro units. And be road construction guys. Do they make more than a harp surgeon do anymore? So tell your kids to buy equipment and go into that business.
So I think, I think that's the, the takeaway is, I mean, you look at retaining, look at fund balance, you see money's there. We have to think more than just.
I get it. I get it. But I don't know how you just tack on it. I don't know what replacing just the water line in two hundred north is gonna cost four point five million dollars. I have to see a hard engineer's cost for something.
Is that drinking water? Those were Josh's numbers.
Yes.
Okay, cause they have replaced the.
Secondary.
The secondary water.
I guess this was just a concern, looking at our balance and looking at, you know, the fact that we have to plug six hundred, what was it, six hundred thousand in the current year. It, there should probably be a discussion of increasing water rates. If we're gonna commit to these projects in the next few years, are we gonna pay for it?
There's no way to pay for them without bonding. And now you're talking about adding additional bonding to the bonds we already have.
Yeah, but the revenue source would be water, not.
I get it. If there is enough of a revenue stream to make that bond.
Well, we have to raise water rates to be, to make that revenue stream.
And then you lower them when it's paid for, right? Just kidding. Never.
Okay, those are tough decisions we're gonna make.
Yeah. Okay, so right now.
But we're not, right now, we're not deciding.
Not deciding any.
Right now, we're just, right now, we're just talking about the six hundred and we're pulling the six hundred from the, from the, from the two million extra, not the four.
But what I want to do is I want to make sure that I have at the end of this, so right now I'm gonna put down five point two mil of unrestricted funds. I wanna put that, I wanna have that a number, have all these when we're done.
It's actually six.
It's four point two unrestricted.
Sorry.
One point two impact fees.
Well, that's as a six three twenty-two.
And that's as, yeah, so that's not including.
So that's not up to date.
It's nine months ago. Thing with six eighty that's gonna come out into one point two.
And the shortages that we've had in power, right?
Yeah, when you look at water cash right now, it's, uh, as of March thirty-first, it's sitting at two point three million. Three point four million.
You know, and you're committing to those projects this year, when, when you pay two hundred thousand for the design costs, you're kind of, you're committing to those four point five down the road. That, I guess that's what you need to be aware of.
So this year, we're paying for the costs, the design.
The design.
Right.
So the question becomes, if you're not gonna do these projects, what's on design?
Yeah, why would we pay to design it right now if we don't know that we're gonna do the four and a half million?
I, I.
I think Josh will tell you, you gotta do something.
You gotta do it.
Okay, but you're, you're telling me four point five million just for the water line? That has nothing to do with replacing the curb, the gutter, the road, the asphalt, all that stuff you're talking about.
Road funds.
That's, so that's where I'm getting these numbers seem very elevated to me.
We hope they are.
I hope they are too.
Yeah, I mean, we hope. We don't pay four and a half million for the water line.
But it's hard for me. I mean, what you're asking me to do though, here now, is you're asking me to make my budget decisions based on that four point something million in two years from now.
But until you're designing, you don't know what it costs.
I don't.
Does that include the whole infrastructure? Does that factor into it?
How many miles of road is that?
That's the. Turn the road up from Main Street. They're only talking from Main Street up to, to eleven east.
Oh, it's.
That's it.
To city boundary.
Oh, right, okay.
That's just one road.
On two hundred.
That's the upper part, the lower part is.
Dean, real quick.
That's where we, we'd kill.
Hey Dean, just real quick to this. I wonder if some of these, if we do have like another work session, some of these big projects coming up, maybe it would be helpful to have a judge come in and say, hey.
Oh, yeah.
Just give.
Careful we're suggesting.
Yeah, so we have a better understanding.
Yeah.
Eleven fifty-two. Just in case anyone was wondering. I'm going till one thirty, so I am not, but. Oh, we have to just be on the right to phone.
Alright.
Look at, look at. Sewer, sewer utility, no big deal. Most of it goes secondary sewer history. Next. Electricity, okay, um, here, here's another plug.
Two point six.
Tells me, tells us initially, it looks like we're gonna have to raise power rates again. You're raising five or so, right?
So retained earnings, that means we have two point six right now that is actually, no.
That's what we're using.
To plug in that holding.
I'll tell you the balance now.
We're using retained earnings to get it out.
The current impact fee balance is two point five million. The unrestricted balance is nine point two million.
So it's two point five and nine.
As of. As of June twenty twenty-two. Tell me those numbers again. Impact fee balance, two point five. Unrestricted, unrestricted, nine point two.
Well, it's nine months ago though.
And that's not factoring in this two point six plug we just put in there.
What is, what does that mean then?
It means it's gonna, we're gonna use that.
Okay, from the unrestricted or from the impact.
Plus, we're, we're down about two million dollars this year.
So nine, eight, seven.
In what?
For that new.
Electric right now.
So we're down to.
So we're already dipping into those balances, but that, those are the most current numbers, audited numbers for now.
They're not giving me the, the year's numbers though.
I realize that we were behind for like two or three months, but for eight of the months, we were, we were in the black, not in red. So what's the year?
It's getting worse, not better.
Well, and you know what? This is one of those things that, you wanna know year-to-date twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
We're two million in the hole right now.
Okay, two million in the hole from what you had budgeted for purchasing power for the entire year?
Not budgeted, just comparing actual revenues to actual expenditures, year-to-date, we're two million negative for twenty-three.
As of March thirty-first.
As of March thirty-first and you're counting just from January to then.
No, we're counting from.
That's from last June, there's July.
June, June, July to March.
To the, March, okay.
Actual numbers, two million in the hole.
All right.
Okay, but as of one July, we actually had, what, two point, two point something and nine point something.
As of, yeah, at the beginning of one July twenty twenty-two, our balances were what I told you.
Yeah, we were about, we were close, eleven and a half or something. November, December.
Eleven, seven.
Yeah, but I mean, but for the year, for, for two million down.
So we're about two million down and then for next year, we're factoring another two point six.
Million down.
So it's still a healthy balance. So I'm just considering.
And that doesn't include the, um, what the rate increases, is that help level out?
We'll see it catch up a little bit, but I mean, five percent versus.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And we, we factored that five percent for the projected.
Yeah, this just includes.
Perry, when we lost a bunch of money, there were two power plants offline. The war was. Oh, no, I, I got all that, but I mean, even, but even then, we're still down two million dollars for the year. Take it all of it into consideration, everything coming back.
Oh, with that, we consider it?
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, we're two million in the hole.
So.
And those are preliminary numbers, like we're gonna go through our audit, we're gonna do year-end adjustments, those numbers will change.
But, but it's gonna be close.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, that's what we can see right now.
You're talking, and he's, you know.
Okay, next.
Even if it's a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Sorry, we should be, I'll try to look at better summaries to kind of show.
Under any increase today, we were.
Yeah, includes the rate increase.
It's certainly been terrible, but. We're really, we're really pushing to get away from.
Okay.
We're trying to, like Davis Weaver built our own customer.
Yeah, that'd be so nice.
That would be sweet.
They're pushing back. I mean, we have three-year vacation districts.
Well, yeah, I get hate's crazy. They, they're wanting to send you to go.
Yeah, the same. That's how they should work with it.
We are kind.
I remember hearing that.
Yeah, kindness, we built for Davis Weaver.
See, you can get rid of that and there you save a clerk.
Yeah.
They don't build for them.
Okay. Sentation, um.
Those fees are gonna go up too, just so you know.
They are?
Yeah, they are. It's just in a meeting. They're gonna have to increase fees. They're down, their budget, they've got a shortfall of about two point one million coming up.
And where do we pass it on to?
To us, yeah.
Works, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what we're predicting right now for the cover costs. And then the last one is stormwater, um. And we are using just a little bit of. And we are using just a little bit of your finger.
That is, that's transfers, that's the administrative service charge, the money that, you know, we say we allocate our, our salary to the enterprise funds. I think that factors that in.
So you know some balance there?
There might be some, but it, that also includes transfers.
No, we're in a posture.
Yeah, we're plugging a positive in this fund, so this is a good number.
Oh, good stormwater, good job.
So we anticipate expenditures are gonna be less than.
No, that's. We're plugging revenue because we don't have the revenue to come in.
Yeah.
I think that's still bad. Put them up in hotel.
You're right, I'm sorry. Okay. You, you know, you could be.
Yeah, but we're not going to.
Okay.
Here's our last slide, eleven fifty-nine.
What is your, what are our next steps?
We, we suggest having as many work meetings as we can.
Yeah, we're, we're good with that.
I think everyone's okay with that, right? If we just add as many as we can.
That'd be the next work meeting, maybe go through.
I want as many as possible.
What we suggest is.
Somebody asks that.
Is a week from today, I'm afraid he's worked for you or not.
Yep.
Do the same thing, and we'll bring the end department one by one.
And these people work, if they need to come in on a Saturday, I'll come in on a Saturday.
Oh, yeah, I will too.
This is, we work enough to meet.
Yeah, me too.
And I understand that Nate and John and.
Are you okay?
Well, I do have a job as well, but.
Have a job, you have a job.
As long as I know in advance, my husband can be four times.
I could come in on Saturday, and that was flexible.
I mean, Friday's are better, but.
I know, okay.
We, we talked about Friday, that's what I've mentioned, the department heads, what you can do.
Fridays.
That's you guys' work day, so it's always better, but.
Yeah, come in a little later, I got a couple of meetings, most Friday mornings. This, this week's my off week, but.
Okay.
If, if we just start a little later.
I'll be honest, I'd stay here till midnight if I had to.
We would too.
I don't, I don't.
Okay, 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 just let Dino, because I can be flexible.
Or after.
So.
Yeah.
I would be fine.
The only thing we have to meet, our deadline is May eighteen, and e- and even then, that's not our deadline, we can.
It's just a tentative budget, right?
We can plug it with fund balance, and then still.
Keep talking, okay.
Okay. What do you, do we have to decide whether we're gonna do truth and taxation?
The middle of June, that's the middle of June, right?
June by June.
Like year twenty-first.
June twenty-first, okay. So it sounds like for sure you wanna meet next Friday with department heads. I think they're kinda planning on it, but.
Okay.
The secret of the Maya on Friday, does that matter?
Can we have talk-ups?
But can I, i- is there a direction? I feel like we need to give you a direction.
Yeah.
A little bit, that's, and, and I want you guys to chime in. This is just Mike's, one, one-fifth of the council direction is no new personnel. You come back to us and tell us how we're gonna make up this two point two million dollar deficit.
Okay. The only ask I have of you.
Okay.
Is that you sit down with each department next week, and then you ask that same question.
How, how come in?
Should we best do that?
Will they come in?
Oh, they.
Yeah, they're.
Okay, so let's say eight, eight-thirty, or, or eight-thirty, nine, nine-thirty, ten, ten-thirty?
Can we meet as a group?
And, and what we'll do is.
Yeah, yeah, this is as a group, this is group speak, right? They'll come in.
No, one at a time.
Oh, one at, I mean, them one at a time in front of all of us.
Okay.
So. And we'll, and we'll do the, we'll do the same thing, we'll look at capital just for them.
Okay.
We'll look at personnel just for them, we'll look at operating.
Just their department.
Just for each department.
Okay, that helps. Can we reach out to them beforehand if we have?
Absolutely.
Prepare them with questions?
I want, yeah, double check.
Oh, is that okay? Because I know Shane had a real issue if I went and talked to the department head without him being there, no one.
No, but they're gonna come to us.
Okay.
This is in our.
But do you wanna reach out to them before?
Yeah, 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 you can do whatever you want.
Because I know when we were doing the interview process for a new city manager, we were making sure it was not a significant amount of time.
We're in power.
They're all, where they, they are anxious.
They wanna get this.
They wanna give their.
They're anxious to express.
Yeah, explain his numbers from their side.
Good.
Do you have a question, Johnny?
Well, it's just, I mean, it's a sucky, it's a totally sucky question, and like, one of the reasons that I would never be a good boss, because I could not fire somebody. Like, I would hire and I would just keep hiring more and more and more.
Oh, you'd work on a.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess that, like, so that's why it's like, makes me kinda sick to my stomach to even ask it, but like.
Making solid positions?
Or, yeah, do layoffs occur it when you're losing stuff like this, or does that just never happen?
Can I, can I interject?
Yeah.
Because all, all you're talking about layoffs, but we're not asking, there's not less work to be done. We're just asking them to do more. Um, so I don't think there's any, I'm not looking at any kind of an issue with reduction in force. I'm saying, instead of adding some, and we're asking you to do more, in what we've been told already, our people are overworked or whatever, and they need more people, I guess. So I'm not looking at any kind of a reduction, or not at all, not at all.
I was trying to figure out.
Because I think with what we're hearing, what we're seeing is, they want more people, not less people, and so we're just gonna try to take those more people they want and add it to what they, personnel they have. I'm not, I don't.
Because in the corporate, in the corporate world, what's happening right now is, it's the same amount of work. Same amount of work, but they're laying people off.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like Medtronic just, is sweeping layoff, like, ten people just.
But in Medtronic.
My division.
Is there less work being done because there's not many people in cable cities?
It's just, they're just eliminating things, and they're eliminating marketing positions, they're eliminating.
Things that we provide for people in cities.
You can't.
There's never a reduction in that, it's always an increase. As soon as you get one more family to live in the city, you have more people to take care of. So we're not.
And that's, and that's fine. I, I, I just, you know, it's kinda like, uh, we don't understand, we rely on our directors to look at it and say like, these guys are working hard and hopefully they're taking like, if somebody appears to not be working as hard, to be able to be like, hey, we need you to work hard, we need you to.
You know, and it's like, if we got somebody, like you said, a director, if the director sees, oh, this guy's, he, he was busy, but maybe instead of forty hours, he's busy thirty, and we do need, maybe I can help shift some of the work to this guy or make him a little.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through that kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I just get more work leeway.
There you go, that's a good guy.
Okay. Well, it's good.
One concern I have, like, the capital equipment requests, there's so much equipment, but like, John, or Mike could have a good point with that, ambulance. These are things to scrutinize and to.
Yeah, and it's hard to see all this stuff on here, it's like. I mean, we've given you summaries, each one of these is a line item.
Yeah, that has a story.
And we can pull out those line items when you talk with departments. Do you wanna look at every line item?
You, you have the detail for capital, the operational is more summarized, you don't have that detail, but if you wanna say, why is this going up a hundred, hundred grand, and you can drill down.
But that's still like, every point, every ask needs to be addressed from the department heads. As we, yeah, but I, I stand. I would caution that if you're gonna start questioning like a, a cop, a six thousand dollar copier that's going for two things.
Yeah.
Then we're, we're talking two point four million dollars.
You gotta have a threshold of what's, what's.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand that, but when you add everything up, it's two point two million with all.
That's what I'm saying, when you're adding it all up, you know, so there's, so, but if you're, if you're gonna get down into that level of weeds, I think there's a, I have to trust my department heads.
Material.
And, and I, you know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And they need to put the heat on this, you know, for maybe for a large thing, but there's, but a lot of it is okay. And, and I totally understand the capital, um, uh, purchase plan, you know, that here's what industry says, here's what we found, that these things are gonna last for X number of years, so I need to put in my budget to get down there. And I think that's what they've done. Now, it's fair to question, can I go instead of five years, can I go six? Or even seven?
Eric, you're a, you're a space Air Force guy. How often do we see this space, you know, space equipment that lasts a decade longer than they predict?
Uh, we're supplying, we're supplying F sixteen's.
I think we probably need to rethink some of these things as a city, because everyone's struggling. When we have that much of a deficit, I do think the six thousand dollar things are.
That's not gonna make a dent on your deficit.
No, I under, no, I understand that.
Careful not to direct the work before I'm in.
No, I agree with that.
Policy, you don't.
I don't, yeah, and I don't. I mean, I'm looking at this capital improvement, and I don't see, I really don't see that much here.
Well, no, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, yes, as a council, we shouldn't be like going through every single thing. But is that, we, there's so many requests on here, and I don't know what the copiers like, but I guess that would go to the manager, right, to determine, should it really be on here? Is it absolutely necessary to involve the city?
In my view, ninety-nine percent of those items wouldn't be on here unless they're absolutely necessary.
And what about the ambulance?
The only, the only idea is, it's necessary, but maybe we can shift it. Doesn't take quite a necessity of it.
I, we just have to make some major changes here.
What's, but what you're talking about, Nate, is the stuff that you're talking about, the ambulance, all that stuff, that does not affect the, the two point two that we're.
Well, the ambulance.
That's the hell that is.
Stuff four hundred thousand.
But it, there is a.
No, but, but, because it's not an ongoing expense.
But there won't be.
We're talking about ongoing expenses.
If we do it.
Personally.
Exactly.
No, see, that's, no, that's the point I'm getting at.
Guys, I can't hear.
Okay. She, she can't keep track of the conversations. One at a time, please.
That, that ambulance is part of that two point four, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the point I'm trying to make is, if we need an ambulance, we do the ambulance. But what Mike brought up is I wanna, I would rather not see this on here altogether and have that factored in, that next year, we're gonna have the previous one paid off. And stuff like that, that I kind of.
The direction you give us.
It's a valid conversation.
And that's.
I just wa, wish that would be flushed out a little more. Three thousand dollar copier, I keep that to.
Oh, that'd be dangerous.
That's.
Place to be.
That's us. You know, I guess what I'm saying is, I would like it to be flushed even a little more before it comes to us, because it's hard looking at all those numbers.
I, I think, Nate, all you can do is trust us that it's been flushed.
And I look at the capital business, and I honestly, other than shifting a year or something, I do not see anything that's really, I mean, I'm seeing a lot less.
Yeah, me too.
Stuff.
And, and the prices seem fairly reasonable for what goes into them. And Mike, I, I think you go back to, then it's almost like on policy, like you talk an F one fifty versus a, a, an EV.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a discussion, I think it's.
We have.
And they'll say, we thought we were gonna, this was gonna be better, and it wasn't. It's poor for something.
Yeah.
They were here as why it was a good.
We did make a good call.
Yeah.
So the direction going forward, how much do we want to see cut before we start talking about truth and.
I say you don't, you permanently.
Have conversations with them.
You find out, you find out what they need, or.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll flash this one back up on here and say.
Okay.
What direction do you want us to do? We got a capital, personnel, operational rates, yeah, and increases use of fund balance.
But I, I really like you to, when you have your department head meeting this week, tell them, say, give us how, how they expect us to pay for this two point two million. I wanna know what they think.
I'll tell you what they think.
They should raise taxes, that's all. That's not the, that's not the answer I'm looking for. That's the only answer they got.
Tell them to come and give me the answer then.
That's not what.
Now, I wanna see a two-probable approach. I understand, you'll probably need to raise taxes a little bit, but I also wanna see cuts at the same time.
They're saying, if we wanna meet the, the level of service that, that you're asking us to meet.
Yeah.
And their costs associated with that.
Isn't that kind of what we're already asking them to do? Isn't that why we have to make the budget? They bring what they think is a feasible budget for their department, and then it's kind of.
And they've already, they've already left stuff off.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they, they could give you a list of, and I wish we, we could have done better, put the wish list down.
No, or could they prioritize it to do a job?
This was a great presentation, as far as I, I've seen several of these open years, and this was fantastic. Thank you.
We really tried to make it simpler.
This was, you know, we heard yours, and last year was our first class.
But this was so much easier, and I like having a paper copy right on, so thank you, I think.
Take this.
Yeah, the way this is presented.
I felt like you liked it.
Leave some downs better for meetings than the last one, because I could actually pick them out.
It's making a lot more sense.
Yes.
Well, thank you for taking time. So what time do we wanna shoot it for? I know you've got a commitment, you think.
I, I know I have one from eight to nine, I don't know if I have a one from, uh, between nine and eleven, that I can either miss or, you know. So I just, I, I don't have that schedule with me.
Do you wanna email the entire group?
Yeah.
When will you have that scheduled?
Uh, five minutes after I get home.
Okay, okay.
I just, it's, it's my day off, so I don't.
And then you'll just send us out a calendar, tell us what time to.
So too.
We'll, we'll kinda shoot for nine o'clock or ten o'clock?
Um, yeah.
I'm on board with this.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
The management meeting will be probably longer, right? If we're gonna, if we're gonna have like an hour for this department.
I don't, I don't think so.
Half hour, forty-five minutes.
I don't think we need a full hour.
So I see.
I think, like, legal, it's fifteen minutes.
Yeah, Josh would want a full hour just because we want a good job.
Josh may want a full hour, Chief Overton may want a full hour.
Yeah, Chief Erickson maybe.
I think we have a schedule on thirty to forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
But if you have.
I mean, we've spent.
Questions that you asked.
Three, and we've covered.
Yeah.
When's our work coming this? Uh, when's he start?
June fifth.
Oh, June, so you won't be able to be animated. I was gonna say, am I the nicer zoom in on him or something?
Yeah.
Just to get a.
I wonder too what the priorities with what's listed, because.
They can tell.
Obviously, it's a priority if it's listed, but could they even take it a step further to rank?
You could say, if you had to cut some.
Or could that be told to them to prepare for the meeting, I guess? Like, just have it in your mind, like, what's absolute must for the city? What mill will we turn here, I guess?
I think they'll say that. It's what they included. I hope they do.